I will call the July 28th meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. And before we get into anything, I'd like to recognize Mike Beddsole, who was here with Sands Anderson tonight.
Thank you.
Reed is on vacation, so.
We'll do Reed, okay. Very good.
And lose a point for anything.
So, as we get ready to have our moment of reflection, I would like the citizens to take a moment and reflect on the life of Morgan Harrington. You know, she was a tax student that was kidnapped and murdered 11 years ago in Charlottesville. And her death in the interim has awakened a movement across the nation in all the schools and campuses, even down into the middle schools and elementary schools called Save the Next Girl now. Save the Next Girl. So, if we could not only keep, make Morgan, her mom Gil, and dad Dan in our prayers, but anything, anyone else that you have your thoughts and prayers for? Thank you. Stand to the place where Lee and Selma Mike, the House Mayor, and Mr. Sacks, if she would please, in the place.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which is the same, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none.
I kind of would like, I don't know if there has been any requests as far as the public comments that we received last week, for them to be entered into the agenda or for them to be read aloud tonight if possible?
They are going, they are presented, they are going into, they're going to be in the minutes of last week's meeting, and they will be attached to the back of the minutes to, they're all there. And no, I'm not going to read them tonight.
I saw the agenda and they were not in there.
I'm sorry. Yeah, well, I think I took my mouth out there again. Thank you.
I, I looked at the agenda and they were not inside the agenda.
Well, we haven't approved the agenda. We approved that, the agenda, the minutes from last week's meeting is what we will approve, and they will be a part of that meeting.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, they were not in the, in that part of that agenda for last meeting, so I would like for them to be.
We got an email, all the council members got an email from Melissa Dimmitt that had all of those comments attached to them shortly after 6:00 on Tuesday before our last meeting. So, they were all sent out to us.
They were sent out, but they are not part of what we are going to be approving tonight from the last agenda. So, I would like for them to be added to the past agenda, please.
So, would you like to amend the agenda to do that?
Yes, please.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion?
It's on the table. Joanne, I think you're confused, you wanted to add it to the minutes, not the agenda.
Yes, well, I'm sorry, to the minutes, yes.
And when we get to the consent agenda, which right now we're voting to either add or delete things from our current agenda tonight.
Okay.
If you, you know, what you want to do, you want to, you want to request that those get added to the minutes, which is the consent agenda, which we'll get ready to.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, do you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
You should, you should withdraw your second. Okay, thank you. Moving on. Public hearings tonight, we have three, we have a street parade vacation request by Gay and Neal Incorporated for an ordinance to vacate Scattergood Drive Northwest right-of-way approximately 1.3 acres from its western terminus at Diamond Hills Park and along the full portion of the right-of-way adjoining the property located at 680, 690, and 700 Scattergood Drive. Is there anyone here to address this? Name, address, speaking to the microphone?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is John Neal, I'm an engineer with Gay and Neal Incorporated, 1260 Radford Street here in Christiansburg. We have a request to vacate a portion of the Scattergood Drive right-of-way, which is actually not really a street per se. It's functioned over the years as the access for CNS Door Plant, and I don't know if, or Andrew, could we put up the?
Sir, can you pull that microphone, Georgia, a little bit?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure she's working.
Sorry, how about that?
I think it's better.
Doesn't matter. So, the request is to vacate, right now Scattergood Drive, if you're all familiar with where it's at, it terminates at the old CNS Door Plant that's been vacant for quite a few years. It does terminate at the end of Diamond Hills Creek Park and goes across the CNS Door Property. What we've, we met with staff previously and have been working on kind of a coordinated effort, hopefully to vacate the right-of-way that would allow for this building to be redeveloped and divided into three portions and actually start to be utilized again. One of the things is the Scattergood Drive right-of-way is so close to the building that it doesn't really allow for any additional improvements such as parking areas and things like that because of the width of the right-of-way as well as the closeness to the building. Here's this graphic that we can show you. The main concern, we were at the street committee tonight, the main concern, I think, was to maintain access to Diamond Hills Creek Park, and we absolutely would do that. Right now, the existing access to Diamond Hills Creek Park does not stay within the right-of-way. The right-of-way is that kind of hatched area along the bottom of the page there. The existing access kind of winds up through the parking area of the CNS Door Plant and goes into the Diamond Hills Creek Park property at the top of the page there, or halfway up the page. One of the reasons for that historically has been that there's some marsh area and wetlands down where the Scattergood Drive right-of-way would go on to Diamond Hills Creek Park. And so, the overall request is to vacate that right-of-way, but still yet maintain a public access to the park. This would allow freedom for the existing property owner to actually utilize the building and renovate it and bring it back into business. That's, that's the brief summary.
Comments?
I'd just like to hear from the street committee.
Well, the street committee discussed this this evening, and we, Mr. Bishop and I felt that vacating that right-of-way was, was acceptable so long as the town maintained access through that. I mean, we have, we don't have a formal recommendation yet, let me rephrase that.
Okay.
Our discussion centered on making sure that we could get to our park if we, you know, and our public can get to the park in the future, especially if we develop that smaller and have parking and so forth. So, the street committee is not prepared to make a recommendation tonight, not because we don't, we're not okay with the idea, because I think we are, but they rebut, the applicant revised the plat slightly and submitted it yesterday.
Yes, sir.
And the staff is going to review that, and so, the street committee's concern, or is generally supportive of the request, so long as we maintain access through there. As long as we can get in and out of there, it's no, you know, it's no problem for us. And also to make sure that the property owner is responsible for maintaining that access as we're going to vacate the right-of-way.
Mr. Bishop, did I do all right on that? Did everything bad?
I did pretty good. Yeah, I personally did have some concerns once again about, right now the town is yours in that, and I have some concerns about the town giving up a right-of-way. But like Mr. said, they have, since they knew drawing out there, and I'm waiting on that to come back to us in two weeks.
Thank you all.
Anyone else here to address this issue? Hearing none. I will close that portion of the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Neal. We have other flood crowd available. The next is a rezoning request by Caldwell Construction, applicant for property owned by Sandra Hawks and Janice Blevins et al., located between the eastern and western terminus of Vinnie Drive, Vinnie Avenue Northwest, 100 Vinnie Avenue Northwest, tax map number 435, A45. The request is to rezonate the property, approximately 4.52 acre parcel from R1A Rural Residential to R1 Single Family Residential with proffers. The property is designated as residential in the future land use map in the 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here to address this issue? Thank you.
Evening, Mayor. Members of council, Steve Semonis with Balzer and Associates, 80 College Street here in Christiansburg. If it pleases the mayor and council, we do have two public hearings, we've got this and a conditional use permit afterwards. I'd like to speak about the project in one entirety and not take up a public hearing time at both requests, if that's okay. What I'd like to do is go through the project quickly. We also have Richard Caldwell and Brian Rice, who are the applicants here with us tonight as well, that would be happy to address council and any questions you may have. We go through the project here. Project site is located, this is Pepper's Ferry Road. It's about four and a half acres, it's this green box you see right here. You've got Vinnie Avenue on the right and Vinnie Avenue on the left, this is Slate Creek, this is the Karma Heights subdivision, and again, New River Valley Mall, Clifton Town Center property that was recently rezoned at the end of last year. The proposal before you tonight is, as stated, was a rezoning and for a planned housing development, total of 18 proposed lots for patio homes. It works out to be about 3.9 units per acre. We'll zoom, zoom in on the site right here. Again, there's the property bolded in black with Vinnie Avenue on your right and your Existing conditions of the property, and we'll talk about this a little bit later. The property as it exists right now does have a sanitary sewer line that comes through the property that was put in several years ago, bisects down through here and then comes back down through the back of Slate Creek. Also, in 2012, there was a subdivision that was approved through staff and council to subdivide some property further to the north that was owned by the, the current owners. And as part of that, as part of that subdivision, there was a 50-foot ingress egress easement that was dedicated across there to tie in for the future Vinnie Drive extension. We'll talk about that here in just a few minutes.
Steve, would you go over that again? These are all townhomes?
No, sir, patio homes.
Patio homes.
So, these are single-family, for-sale patio homes, single-family detached.
And about how many?
There's 18 total proposed.
Okay.
I lost the clicker. Andrew, would you mind scrolling to the next sheet? So, this is the layout plan, master plan. So, again, we have 18 lots, we have 10 on the south side of the proposed Vinnie. So, there's the existing Vinnie on the, on the east side and Vinnie on the left, this is Slate Creek. So, again, this easement right here, this 50-foot easement would then turn to a full 50-foot dedicated town right-of-way. We would install this section of street to a full town standard, 30-foot of asphalt sidewalk now on both sides of the street. For Mr. Hubbard, you can kind of see the, the outline of some of the houses on here. So, again, these are patio-style homes, every, every home would have a driveway and a garage. We have 10 on the south side, 18 on the north side of the property, and an open space and stormwater management area of about .38 acres in the northwest corner of the property. As part of the planned housing development, as you all are aware, we can set setbacks and make recommendations for our zoning itself. What we have proposed here is a 25-foot front yard setback, a 25-foot rear yard setback. We have 15-foot side yard setbacks along Karma Heights, which again, we'll, we'll speak about here shortly, and then five-foot side yard setbacks internal to the project itself. A couple of notes about the project itself, this, all the grounds, landscaping, mowing the grass, all that will be handled by a management company. The developers will put that, will, will hire a management company to handle all the, all the maintenance on the property itself. No dumpsters or refuse collection other than individual trashcans and recycling cans are proposed with us. That's often a question as far as dumpsters and, and the cleanliness on site, so these would be, again, as they're single-family detached units, everybody would have their own trashcan and recycling. All the roads will be designed to public standards, have curb and gutter and sidewalk as we talked about. As only 18 lots is a very low-traffic generating project here, this is similar to some of the developments that Mr. Caldwell has, and Mr. Rice have developed in the past. They typically hit a, hit a household of age range, no offense to anybody, but that 50 to, to over-age range, so there's, there's limited amount of traffic coming in and out of this when we do our traffic impact analysis and traffic trip projections. We look at that as a single-family residential home, and it puts approximately 170 total trips in and out per day. The connection of Vinnie has been, has been planned since the early 60s. Karma Heights was developed in 1964, and that's, that right-of-way right there was stubbed to this property at that point. Slate Creek Commons, as you know, was developed in 2004, and again, the right-of-way for Slate Creek came right to that property line and stubbed. And then again, as we spoke about earlier, the 2012 plat went ahead and dedicated an ingress egress easement across there. So, there's always been plans for Vinnie Avenue to connect, make that cross-connection, which is, as we discussed at planning commission, cross-connection in these neighborhoods is important, provides another way for, for residents to get in and out of their subdivisions without having to get on the main road, which is Pepper's Ferry in this case, also provides another access point for emergency services to get it out, in and out of, of areas in town if, if certain roads were blocked. Utilities, as, as we spoke about also, we do have an eight-inch water, or sewer line there, we would be connecting water lines from Vinnie to Slate Creek as well. Stormwater management, again, up in the northwest corner right here. Currently, the entire property as well as a lot of the off-site area drains kind of in a belly right down this direction, and there's a ditch line along the back of these lots here that was installed and constructed during the Slate Creek development that leads down further to a stormwater management pond further to the west. We would be handling all of our stormwater management in this area right here. We would be holding to all state and local guidelines for stormwater management during the site plan process to ensure we're taking care of any required runoff or volume reductions that would be necessary for the protection of the downstream property owners. This project right here is, as proposed, meets many of the comprehensive plan goals, from transportation connections to housing resources. As everyone knows, housing in our areas is, is at a shortage, and the demand for single-level living on these patio, patio-style type homes is in high demand as well. I believe Mr. Rice spoke at our last meeting, I believe there was one, one house on the market at the time last week that fit the product that's proposed with this plan here. We do have four proffers that we're proposing with this, that would be developed in substantial conformance with the master plan, that it would be utilized only for R1 single-family detached use, no townhomes, no apartments, no duplexes. Any proposed residential lot on, or unit on Lot 1, this came, this proffer came about based on some conversations with our neighbor, on, on our, on our neighbor to the, to the east here. So, the third proffer, proffer was any proposed residential unit on Lot 1 shall locate any outdoor areas on their internal western property line, and we can talk about that a little bit. And then, back here in the back on Lot 11, there's some existing fruit trees, and our neighbors here, Mr. White here and his wife had mentioned during the, the planning commission meetings that a lot of deer come up in the area there, there are fruit trees, this was an old orchard, and the fruit trees, you know, had some sentimental value in this area here, so our sec, our last proffer was, if any of those existing fruit trees are damaged or have to be taken out during the construction, we would replace those fruit trees with another fruit tree at a one-to-one ratio. So, if we take out a tree, we plant a tree. The applicants did meet, Mr. Rice went around to the neighbors in Karma Heights as well as everybody in Slate Creek, knocked on some doors, introduced themselves, introduced the project, wanted to get neighbors', neighbors' concerns and ideas out very early in the process. That was done prior to our initial planning commission work session and public hearing. We heard a lot of good comments from that, and as we went through the planning commission, we made adjustments to the plan that Mr. Rice would like to discuss, and we'll be happy to answer any questions on those as well. After our planning commission public hearing, we did make a couple of adjustments. We had some of the residents with us at our, our planning commission vote, which was on Monday, the 20th. At the time, the neighbors that did speak during that meeting seemed satisfied and appreciative of the, of the concessions we made. I would be happy to answer any questions council has at this point. Yes, sir.
Did you say that there was going to be five foot, five feet between homes?
No, sir, there's five-foot setbacks, so we would, we would have a minimum of 10 feet between homes.
10 feet.
Yeah, these, the footprints you see here are the actual footprints of the units that would be built, so they are less than 40 feet in width, so you'd really have probably 14 or 15 feet.
15 feet on, on the south side and 18 feet on the north side.
So, those are some of the architectural elevations, Mr. Hubbard, of the units.
Show me right the foot, and, and that's going to be 10 foot?
So, this, this is the elevation, these are all four elevations, front, both sides and the rear of the unit itself. But from the side, if you, if you had a house right here, you would have another house about 15 feet over on the side. Yes, sir.
All right, I understand. And I would like to go back to where you were showing those contour lines. You know, we've had some problems with flooding lately and, and where, where exactly where the homes have been built on that, on that map? Are they down to the bottom?
So, the homes basically, if you look at this, this sewer line right here, that's the limit of where we would develop. Everything would be from this sewer line over, so the lowest spot of the property would be saved down here for the stormwater management area. And right now, Mr. Hubbard, all the development up along Pepper's Ferry, so this is, Pepper's Ferry is just right down here, so you've basically got one block of lots. You've got the convenience store up there, I believe sits right in here. Those are all older developments, so we don't have any stormwater management on those lots right now, they were developed before those regs were in place. There are some of the newer developments further this way that have stormwater, I believe the mini storage has some out there. So, there's really no detention, stormwater detention for any of the existing subdivision or any of these lots right here right now, so all that water comes undetained right down through this valley. So, we will have stormwater management in here and hopefully be able to help any of the concerns further downstream than anybody's, that some of the folks in Slate Creek brought to our attention during the planning commission process.
So, with these particular homes, these 18 homes, there's very little chance of any type of flooding damage on those.
On those, yes, sir. We'll be, we'll be grading the lots and putting in the storm sewer to, to keep any, any off-site water from affecting the homes we would build.
Okay.
Are they going to have basements or are they going to have slabs?
On slab.
So, this came by the planning commission, and he passed.
Unanimous, correct?
I'm sorry?
Unanimous, correct?
Yes, sir.
No, no, one absent.
But then, one of the recommendations and one of the conditions was for you to, for you guys to see if there was a way to add up another sidewalk to the other side of the street.
And, yes, ma'am, and we have that shown now, we provided an updated drawing to Will last week, so you can see the sidewalk on the south side right there.
So, there is connection.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, we've got them on both sides.
That was curb and gutter, right?
Yes, sir.
That was actually one of the proffers. Or, it was in the package, I guess.
It came as a condition from planning commission, originally, Mr. Stipes.
I'm having a condition.
Yes, sir, we originally just had sidewalk proposed on the northern side, and that was a condition from planning commission.
I have a question, Mr. Semonis.
Yes, ma'am.
I've had several residents reach out to me that live on Vinnie and Slate Creek, and there's a huge concern over how many homes are being fit into the small space, those are very small areas with limited easements. Is there any consideration in your business plan to reduce that number? So, the, see, all the lots around it are considerably larger than, than all of them that are being stuffed there in the middle. And there's a, there's a concern about that, about property values being lowered and it just not fitting in.
Well, I can, I can let Mr. Rice speak to the business model, we did go back and look at property values, because that was brought up, and, and Brian could probably speak to this as well. When we went back and looked at the past sales in Slate Creek Commons and, and Vinnie, they were anywhere from the high 180, high hundreds to 180, 190, up to the mid, upper 200s. The, these units here would be in a much higher price range, so from the price of, of what these type of units are selling for right now around town, it should do nothing but bring the property values up, so it would not be a detraction or a negative on the property values, in our opinion. We did, when we went back to planning commission, we did make some adjustments to the side setbacks where some of the concerns were with our neighbors as far as how close we were here on Karma Heights, and we did widen up our lots here on this, on this upper side as well. Now, the lot size themselves, it's, it's, they're not, they're not that far underneath what, what would be a normal R1 10,000 square foot lot. You know, these lots are deep, we've got them narrow because of the type of homes they are, but we're not talking 5,000 square foot lots, I think our, our smallest is in that 7,700 range, I believe. So, we've got a couple that are up pushing close to that 10,000 square foot, which is, again, is that, is that standard single-family sized lot.
Right, and, and I have a concern, and, and trust me, I'm, I'm trying to compile everything that I have heard into a few statements, but if you look at your number one and you say that there's some concessions because any patios or buildings or whatever have to be put in a certain spot, that kind of tells us that number one is very close to 90 there on Vinnie, and I'm not sure that's, I just couldn't support that when you can't use your property the way you should, that means it's in a too small of a space.
Well, so, by right, if it was, I believe in our, our, the zoning it is now, or the, excuse me, the standard zoning that would, if you would go to a by right, is a 15-foot setback, so that's what we've proposed. So, if we went in and built it as it is, we could put a, we could put a house 15 feet off the, off the property line. So, that's what we did on this side, was we put it back to those by right setbacks. So, somebody could come in, if we, if we subdivided this up into a 10,000 square foot lot, somebody could build their house 15 feet off of that, off of that property line right there. The concession to the Basham property right here was, and Ms. Basham is here tonight, her father lives in, in number 90 here, as we talked with her after our planning commission meeting, the concern was, he's got several, he's got a garage and some sheds, and I think a work building, very close to that property line, so there was a concern that if we built a new home, we didn't, we, she didn't want to have a, an issue, and I don't mean to speak for you, Ms. Basham, but tell me if I'm, if I'm misstating anything, but didn't want to set up a situation where we would put somebody in a brand-new home and then they would complain about her father or how, how, you know, his sheds and everything are close to that property line. So, in order to mitigate that, we, we put that proffer, so any of the outdoor patio space, you know, decks, anything like that would be reversed and be on the far side of this lot right here. So, that was, again, that was just a way that we thought we could help mitigate some of the concerns Ms. Basham had.
So, they did come to, to planning commission several times, trying to come up with a better solution as far as working with some of the neighbors, and like he was stating just a minute ago, those plans did not look like this when they first came to us. The homes were very close to the other homes, they were, they came out with the solution of trying to find out what they were going to do with trees and, and many other things, and here sidewalks and things like that, so, I gotta say, this is a very difficult ball for everybody to, just, just because you cannot please everybody, but you got houses on the right side that are older homes, that have a lot of land, I mean, that's what Christiansburg used to be like. You got on the left side, you got, what are they? They're not townhomes, they are duplexes, and so, they are really close together. I think it's misfortuneing here that you will have to connect those two roads together, but in reality, it was designed like this, to be like this 60 years ago. And I think a lot of the owners of the properties on either side, they kind of understand, some of them understand this, I think they, people on the left side, a lot of people don't understand that, because when they bought those homes, that's a cul-de-sac right now. And right now, you're going to have a street that is going to be pretty much used all the time, because now it's going to connect you from one side of, what is it called? The Slate Creek Drive is going to connect you to the other side of Walters and, and eventually take you out to Stuffer. So, I think it's going to be a very, it's going to be a, very much used street. I do think we need a street like that, because we need connection, but as far as the density, it has come up to be a problem, Marissa, and...
But again, our, I will, we'll state again, our density is under four units per acre, which is what that by-right density in an R1 zoning would be. And very similar density, if you look at the bottom of Slate Creek here, if you were to take those duplex units, it works out almost exactly to what we have shown here, and as you can see, we've got a lot more depth on the back of those units as well.
And then right here, it's Stafford Farm, too, not Stafford Farm, but over here on the right side, you're going to be approving, or not approving, I don't know what the vote is going to be, but we got, what is the density there? It's going to be...
So around one hundred and sixty units?
One hundred and sixty units, and that's going to be, how many units per acre again?
Can't tell you off the top of my head, we've heard about it.
This is the man walking?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm listening.
Seventeen units per acre, so.
Mr. Rice, can I ask you a question? Are, are these homes going to be similar to the ones that you have around Windsong?
Exactly, yes, sir.
They're Jack?
And, and you're asking about the, the feet between them. At, uh, uh, Windwood Estates, we have fifteen feet between the homes. And we'll have that same management on the south side. On the north side of Vinnie, we're going to have eighteen feet between the homes. So that should be further apart on the north side.
And the homes are going to look very similar?
Same floor plan.
The same floor plan?
Yes, sir.
If, if, before the next meeting, if anybody wanted to go up there and see if it's, it's not Windsong, what is, what is your name of your road?
It's called Windwood Estates.
Windwood Estates, and he has seventeen?
I can miss it.
No?
It's perfect, huh? If I may approach?
Okay.
I'm, I'm Brian Rice, twenty-four forty Hitching Post Drive in Christiansburg. Richard Colwell and I will be partnering to develop, market, and sell these homes. Richard and I just recently finished a development called Windwood Estates that consists of seventeen patio-style homes, and we plan to replicate a similar development on Vinnie Avenue. And several of you were on town council when our last development was approved, and I hope you have visited the development to discover the quality and care we put into it. Because of the, the virus, I've, I've tried to meet individually with as many of the surrounding neighbors as possible. I knocked on every door in Slate Creek and most of the homes in Karma Heights. There are forty-eight homes in Slate Creek, and I made contact with thirty-six of the neighbors and about ten or so neighbors in Karma Heights. I enjoyed talking with the neighbors and correcting some of the miscommunication that had circulated amongst the neighbors. A petition had circulated before I arrived, and it's obvious that some of the information was incorrect. One of the first misconceptions is that we're building townhouses or substandard homes. In fact, the first item on the petition states that we are building homes of lesser value. But the homes we're building are single-family detached homes on individual lots. According to the local multiple listing service, the last three homes sold in Slate Creek averaged two hundred and twenty-four thousand, and the last three homes sold in Windwood Estates averaged two hundred and eighty thousand. So our homes that we will be building are selling for about fifty-six thousand more than the homes in Slate Creek. And there was some concern about traffic, and as I explained, the homes we will build are typically purchased by retired people. Usually, they do not have children at home, and therefore, they generate less traffic than other developments. The unbuilt portion of Vinnie Avenue will be completed to allow traffic to utilize the existing road network. The normal flow of the small amount of traffic generated by these homes will be towards the town of Christiansburg, thus traveling away from the Slate Creek subdivision. But this open street would give Slate Creek residents more flexibility when they leave their homes. Once I began speaking with the neighbors, I learned of the proposed connector route being planned from Magnolia Point Community. We were even accused of colluding with the Frayland Group to connect that development with ours and allow traffic to get through to the mall through our new road. And I can assure you, we have not had any communication with other developers. But the scenario is possible. In order to go to the mall, it will be possible for someone to leave the Magnolia Point Development and travel the connector road to Walters, take a left on Vinnie, take a left on Weddell, take a right on Almeta, take a right on Stafford, take a left on Stewart Quinn Boulevard, and take a left at the light onto Pepper's Ferry. But most likely, a person would leave the Magnolia Point and turn left on Pepper's Ferry and go straight to the mall. So the fear may be greater than the reality. Our small development will not generate much traffic, but it will provide additional access for fire and rescue vehicles and meet the comprehensive plan's goal of promoting interconnected communities. The planned development we are asking for is very similar to other developments approved in Christiansburg, such as Windsong Heights, Windwood Estates, Lions Gate, and the development before you later tonight, Reagan's Point. In fact, our plots are going to be larger than the others I have listed. Our density of three point nine eight units per acre is lower than any other approved development in recent town history. And we took comment from the planning commission and suggestions from the neighbors, and were able to make several changes to our original plan to benefit the neighbors. Namely, we have modified the open space so that we could shift the lots away from Weddaway to allow a larger side yard setback. Our previous submission had a five-yard setback that matched other developments, but the neighbors along Weddaway felt that was too close. And so we were able to triple the setback to fifteen feet, thus providing five more feet than is required. Also, we were able to increase the road frontages to allow eighteen feet between the homes on the north side of Vinnie. And this is to allow, alleviate some of the concerns that the development was too dense. And we clarified in the narrative that the density is less than four units per acre. And the Basham property at ninety Vinnie Way was concerned about the placement of the home on Lot One, and we proffered to place the outdoor uni, outdoor areas, such as decks and patios, on the western side of that lot facing Lot Two, and this would afford Mr. Basham more privacy. And for our neighbor from Blacksburg, who has a rental house at fifty Weddaway, who was concerned about the fruit trees on our property, we've proffered to replace any fruit trees that's removed during the grading process. And we're pleased that the planning commission gave us a unanimous vote to rezone the property and a nine-to-one vote to approve our development plan. And I shared with the planning commission last week that there was only one home available to purchase in Christiansburg that was one level and under twenty years old and available for, to move in. And then yesterday, I checked again, and, and now there are no homes that fit this description in Christiansburg for, available to be purchased and, and immediate move-in. And so the demand is here, and we plan to offer quality-built development that will make the buyers proud that they live in Christiansburg. These homes are going to be an asset to the town and provide much-needed housing options to retired people. And Richard Colwell's the builder, he's actually here if, if you have any questions for the, the builder.
I have a question for you, Rick.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to build them all at one time, or is it just going to be a couple at a time? And then when you sell them, then you're going to build a couple more? What is your plan?
That's correct, we, we usually have, try to have two under construction at the same time, and then as we sell one, then we start another one. So probably be a three-year project once we get started building.
I should remember this by now, but the garages, are they two garages?
They're, that's correct, they're, they're two-car garages, and the driveways are, are twenty feet wide, so that you can park two cars in the garage and two cars in the driveway, so that minimizes traffic parked along the street.
So we, we're possibly talking about thirty-four people living in, in those homes. If you count, you know, you make seventeen homes, and then you may have one person leaving Port House, or in some instances, a couple. I guess the one question I have is, um, there, there will be possibly blind side exit right here off of, what is that? Off of Walters and then the Stafford Road. How are we, to make sure that there will not be a blind spot in there, on that corner? Just to make sure that there will not be accidents? I, I know the road right here, the main road is supposed to be getting wider somehow, I think.
My, my understanding is that Vinnie Avenue, the, the built portion is within a fifty-foot right-of-way, so the right-of-way exists in order for, if the road ever needs to be widened. But, but my understanding is that the Stafford Drive is going to be widened when the Clifton development goes in.
I, I think I confused it, is the Vinnie Avenue going into Stafford?
That's correct.
So that one is the one that I'm just kind of concerned. So you don't think there will be a concern as far as the exit out of that location?
Uh, there, again, it's a fifty-foot right-of-way both on Stafford and Vinnie, and, and, and I think that we've even talked with the town some about clearing some vegetation from that corner, but, but they are regular town streets, existing streets.
Okay, any other comments for Mr. Rice or? Colwell, you're pretty good to case, or you want, would you like to speak more to him?
No, I'm, I'm good, I'm good, unless there's questions for the builder.
There were some comments that were turning, can, can somebody read those, please?
I'm going to get the, the waiting, and then I will, I will read the one that was requested, didn't we read it to me? Uh, okay, uh, anyone else here to address that? And I've got doors open on both sides. Mr. Thank, would you like to come?
Thank you.
And you can take your mask off while you're talking. Give you a...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Um, my name's Denise Basham, my father is Richard Cleon Basham. He used to be well-known around town, because he's been here for years and years and had his businesses here. I've just, I'm a little bit like, I know you guys have been doing what you can to try to make this house not so close, but I think it's ridiculous, it's too many houses in the first place. I'm a real estate agent also, twenty-four years' experience, been a real estate auctioneer, a seller in Christiansburg. I sold Weddaway, fifty Weddaway, to Mr. White, who, who's been speaking at these meetings. Just like, the thing that, one of the things that really bothers me is that when they, when they're standing up here talking about this property, and the same thing that's been talked when you go around the neighborhood was that, I'm going to use your words, your email, really believe our plan to provide small homes for retired people. It's not just for retired people, and if it was, they're being, they're being misled. You're saying that, that's, that's the email you send out? Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. That's the email that's been sent out, and it's very aggravating, because it could very well end up being overflow student houses for Virginia Tech students, their moms, dads, purchase, I do it all the time, sell them like that. Blacksburg, we sell them homes, they rent them out to students, they put two or three students in a house with their child. That way, you know, they get the house payment paid and they can, you know, rent the house out. That causes multiple cars at each house. I heard Ms. Hicks say that maybe one person per house? I doubt that's going to be the case, three bedrooms, two baths. There's going to be a lot of people that can pass USDA financing, they're going to snag onto these houses. Young people, first-time home buyers, there's not a lot of parking here. I don't know where the overflow parking is going to be. If you've got a garage, you've got one car there, you've got one in the driveway. What if you have your funeral, birthday parties, Christmas, Thanksgiving? Where's this overflow going to be? Parked in the streets, in front of my dad's house? He's going to be dealing with all of this for three years. Dump trucks, mud, dirt, all of that's going to be going back and forth. Where are they going to park these vehicles? What are they going to do when they can't find a place to park once these places are in here? They're going to park all up and down the streets. Now you've got houses on this side and houses on this side of Vinnie, parking in the streets, parking there, bicycles, kids, noise, it's just going to be a disaster. I feel like that we have enough in that area. I love Mr. Rice's idea, and I like that we do. I think that the patio homes are wonderful homes, I'm not knocking them. I just think that that's not the place for them, it's not the, he says that it'll increase the value. We talked about it, I talked to, to Mr. Rice about it. It's not going to increase the value. I could, I would ask each one of y'all tonight, who wants to buy my daddy's house? Knowing this is happening, can I sell you his house and make a good profit on it? No, I cannot. So it is affecting his fair market value and his quality of life. Same up with, with the house that I sold, Mr. White. When I look at that, and I look at the houses, and I think about, you know, when, he said he might retire here one day, and I look at another email, Mr. White and his wife live in Blacksburg, this is addressed to Mr. Stipes, and it says, "And have a rental home that they recently purchased even though their quality of life is not affected." This was sent from Mr. Rice to Mr. Stipes. Okay, what I see wrong with that is, why is it okay with whatever Mr. Rice wants to do with this property, but whatever Mr. White wants to do with it, that's pushed to the side? It's his quality, it don't affect his quality of life? It's a rental property, and so will all of those also one day become rental properties. I like the way it is, I feel like changing it, the traffic, the noise, she spoke about the street coming in. I even read, one of these emails has in it that because the road is narrow, that automatically will slow down traffic. Give me a break, you're going to have to like pull over, over on the side to let the next car pass? That's not going to be the case, they're going to be parking on the streets, they're going to be everywhere. And Dad, he's sitting right there, he's the only one fronting this mess, and he's got his front and his side. You know, he has the right, his property is just as valuable, and he has, I'm here tonight, because he's eighty-one years old. And he has put his life into his properties and the business that he worked at, and he has a right to get his investment and his money back, too. And it's not fair that he, these properties are going to be, they're, they're not important. These people have been residents for a long time, and they are important. And, and I'm just, it just really infuriates me, because I feel like it's, it was going one way, and then all of a sudden, I don't make it to the other meeting, and I hear, oh, it's been passed and this and that, and I'm like, no, it hasn't, I called Mr. Stipes on the phone. I said, "Tell me exactly what this process is, because I, I feel like our voice matters." And he told me, it's, um, I just think it's real important that the planning board members, the town council, back up the residents' best interest, and this one isn't. I want him to have his subdivision somewhere else. We've got plenty over there, I don't want the congestion coming down Vinnie Avenue and then turning onto Stafford and headed out, crossing that road again. There's going to end up, it has, going to have to have a red light there, because I already sat there for fifteen minutes while everybody's turning up Stafford for all the other new properties that's going into the back. We have a lot now, we, and he's talking about not enough houses on the market? It's the same way everywhere. With this COVID-nineteen our market has, it's going hot and it's going fast, but that's because we have a, we have a low supply, because people are afraid to move right now. You've got the younger ones moving, we've got some people moving around, but it's not just these houses, it's everywhere. So anyway, I'm, I'm, you know, I appreciate you listening to me. I could go on and on and on, I don't want it, I don't want it there. I wish, I would like for it to stay at the character that it has now and let us have the nice, bigger lots and, and homes. I would just like to see it continue on, and let us keep Christiansburg, at least a piece of it, and have the bigger lots. I think people want bigger lots and a garage and a home and a place for their kids to play in the yard. That's what I think, and I appreciate you letting me talk.
Thank you, Ms. Basham, I appreciate it. Okay, I have, okay, yes, sir, come on. And then I will follow it up with this lady, and then I'll just move back and forth to the door entrance.
I'm Don Connor, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. Uh, two fifty Vinnie, and I'm speaking in opposition of this project. Not that I don't like his idea, I think his density is too high. Not that I don't like his idea. I think his density is too high. I was here sometime last year when the Clifton Town Center project was being talked about. I spoke in opposition to that. It was eight units per acre, and we were talking about about 200 to 300 things more units on that Clifton Center area. The section of Vinnie that affects me is I'm in Slate Creek. Vinnie doesn't run in front of my house. I'm actually on Slate Creek. But the traffic coming into this development is going to be coming right through my neighborhood. We do have nice 50-foot wide streets in Slate Creek. They were built to residential standards when the Slate Creek was built. They weren't built to handle heavy equipment. The other end, the east end of Slate, of Vinnie, is very narrow where it opens onto Stafford. Now, when Frayland made the proposal to develop that area, he said he would make Stafford wider, which would handle part of that problem. But there's been no dirt turn there yet, so Stafford is exactly the same size as it was. Making a turn out of Vinnie East onto Stafford is almost suicide because you can't see around the corner or over the hill. Now, I understand. They'll be taken care of when he starts his development, but that's still down the road. Behind my house is where the little runoff is that will come out of their drainage pond. I went out today and measured, from my basement level to the creek is two-foot elevation. Now, I do have a lot there, but on the other side is city property at about a 30 to 40-degree angle. So all the water runs off out of their development will come right into my basement, or conceivably could. I haven't had a water problem before, but I have had water in my backyard. All the talk about Vinnie being an access to allow emergency vehicles and everything else more into Vinnie, it's not been a problem. I've been there 12 years. We like the fact that it's kind of dead-end. We don't get the drive-through traffic. We don't get the kids coming through driving fast, trying to avoid something. It's a real nice area. It's mostly retired people, not all, but it's mostly retired people who bought because of the project. Let me look at my notes a minute. Like I say, I'm not against his development. I'm against his density. And I think the council needs to look at the way they do things in that you've approved Clifton Town Center. Let's get some work done on it and see what happens to Stafford as far as the traffic there before we start sticking more traffic in this area. The area of the Adams and the projects behind there have just blossomed. And traffic, when I was there 12 years ago, there wasn't anything. Now it's really heavy. That's all I have.
Thanks, Don. Yes, Mayor.
Hi. My name is Yiping Fu. I live on the, actually, I have a property on 50 Waddaway. I want to thank the councilmen and also the commissioner, the planning commissioner. We really thank you guys for listening and taking the time because that makes me feel much better being a resident there. I know not everybody able to come because I know a lot of elderly are living on Waddaway. They are not able to come, and there are a lot of children on the Waddaway, and we don't have sidewalks. And so I agree with that gentleman. Yes, we are not against to the development, but we do have concern about the density of the developments. Because thanks to Commissioner Ashley Briggs, last week, we kind of hit, finally went home and thought about what she said. It is true. Originally, we were talking about nine houses in that area, and now we are talking about 18 houses. It's really dense. And then we actually took the time to go to the Winwood Estate and take a look at what's that like. And actually, I have to say the houses are beautiful, but it's so crowded, really, really crowded. So I'm worried about, and I don't believe that is going to be senior homes because everybody can have the money and purchase the property. So I don't believe, that can be assumption, but I don't believe it's going to be a senior home. Plus, I'm worried about the citizen or the residents over there because there is no sidewalk. There are children. There are elderly. So even though they are not here to speak up, I think it's our duty to do so because we bought that property not for the investment. We wanted to live there. We want to live there when we are old. So it's our senior home, and we love that property. It's like the last piece of oasis in Christiansburg. It's such a beautiful place. We just fall in love with that greenery. And we want to ask the councilmen and women to be seriously consider what is this going to do to the area because we feel like it's a mismatch. And then last time, Ashley Briggs said, "Yes, you guys proposed having more dense development, but around that area, it's all like that." So it's not like a mismatch, but in our area, yes, there is a mismatch. And we are also worried, once that is developed, and there is another lane on the, another side, just next to us, and it's going to get too crowded, and then we feel like we don't have a voice. And then we really thank everybody to listen and take the time to understand the problem and concern that we have. We are not against the development, but the density is something we think is too much. Especially, we don't have the sidewalk and the safety of the elderly and the children. And also like the Vinnie, it's just not safe to turn there. So thank you so much for listening. Thank you for your good work. Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm, no, you're up.
I'm Dale Smith from 70 Vinnie, live next to her father, Mr. Basham. You know, I realize it's going to happen one way or the other, but I'll echo the thoughts about everybody else about the density. 18 units in there. I would say if you can't fit a fire truck between the houses, you shouldn't be building them that close together. But the only other thing I was going to ask is, what about the fire hydrants? Do we have a fire hydrant that will be somewhere in that unit? Anyway, one of the other things is there are a lot of kids that travel up and down the road. There's no sidewalks, of course. And, back, can I approach the map, point out a couple places? This is our home, Mr. Basham's, and then, of course, Waddaway, and then Vinnie. This, one thing that I would like to concern myself about, I leave there every morning, and I have to pull out far enough to where you can see behind the bank because you can't see it. And let me tell you, this is a speedway. It's very narrow. And I've often, almost suggested that maybe they put a stop sign here. And if they do do construction, and construction is approved and they use Vinnie Avenue, something needs to be done there because it's just way too narrow and too fast. There's no visibility right here. Also, coming in this way when you come home, there's a dip right here where it now is down. You almost have to stop if there's another vehicle coming because there is a dip and all over there. And you really almost have to stop, especially with the mailboxes and stuff right there as close to the road. But that's, my big concern is this road being used for construction. The denseness of this, if you go out and look at this, it looks a lot smaller than what it really is there. But Stafford, I would say it needs to be wide before any construction. Before they use it, unless they want to come in over here, of course, everybody's going to be upset about that too, so. But naturally, we'd like to keep it, I mean, we were watching on podcast, and if they kept the road coming down, it wouldn't help people over here if they made a turnaround up there and just kept this part, it's so different from that, it's a blizzard. I mean, I know it's capitalism, and they want to get the most out of their money that they're going to put into it for 18 units. I would think that that's a lot. That's really tight. And like I said, if you can't fit a fire truck between the two houses, really, you shouldn't, I wouldn't want a house that close together anyway. But I know it's inevitable that construction will probably be improved. The density, and of course, you know, they've got to weigh in their, you know, the cost that they're going to be in, you know, subject to, and everyone has more money for them, but it's going to change the neighborhood for the worse for us. I mean, we've got a quiet neighborhood, and we sit out and watch the skunks, the opossums. I mean, you'll see them all at night, but then the deer run through that site and all. But the big thing is density. I mean, it's just so, they're so close together. And ideally, I would like for it to stay the way it is, but, you know, progress is progress, and, you know, that's about all I really have to say. I just hope you consider that. But I realize they're going to make their money, and that's what it's really all about, so. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Yes, sir. I'm pointing at the doors, sir.
We're coming from both doors, both angles. All right. And I've been a school counselor here for 30 years in Virginia, and,
Your name, sir?
Ken White, 50 Waddaway.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm in the Karma Heights group, and I'm the guy with the apple orchard. My wife, Dr. Fu, just spoke a few minutes ago. But, and we do enjoy all the wildlife, everything coming back from those apples, you know. When we bought it, I want to let it be known because it was an email that came out that said we were just kind of temporary, just renting it to make a profit type thing or something like that. But actually, that's not true. When I first spoke at the planning commission meeting, I said I was going to be a long-term resident, just like my wife said. We plan to retire there. So we're in this for the long haul. And we, so we're very invested in it, and I didn't think that was a really fair thing to say because I said exactly opposite. The person who said that in the email was there, heard me say it, and then he put in an email opposite what I said. But we're there for the long haul. I do what you've heard over and over, density, all right? That's my concern, and I was satisfied last meeting. And I had to, you know, as I said, I'm a school counselor, so I examine my feelings, and why was I satisfied? And I thought about it. I thought, wait a minute. If, it was about the easements. Mr. Rice brought up, or Simone, somebody had brought up the utility easements, and they said, "Well, you can't really," and we were talking about the privacy fence, some of the barriers, you know, the screening. And when they said that, I said, "Well, you know, then it's a moot point." And you're right. You can't go near a utility easement, and you don't want structures near that, right? So I said, "Okay, I'm satisfied," you know, because I was mainly talking about the privacy fencing and all. But then I thought about it, and I thought, "Wait a minute. If they just made it a little less dense, if they made it more like the zoning is for that or like the proposed rezoning, which has already been approved, but not the density, that's our concern, has not been approved, then it would, they could put the fencing on their property. They just do two less units." So it's the units that are there. We have no problem with our property values. You know, thank you all. You've done a good job in planning and everything with the town of Christiansburg. And our property value is going up just in a short amount of time. But if you think about it, can I approach the map? Is that?
Sure.
Okay. We're right up here, 50, okay, apple orchard in there, and we're up on the hilltop. So that was a reason, also because I care about my neighbors, and we're all, you know, talking. I care about them as much as I do myself. The privacy fence would be more in here. So he said, "Why is he so concerned about that?" It's because we are up here, especially this, us two right here at 30 and 50, and not so much that Basham looks more straight-on, but we're up here on more of a hill. So we're looking right down on this over here. As my wife said, we could be looking up here. That's something else. And we knew when we got it, it's not going to stay like that. It's too valuable property. Property is at a scarcity, you know, here in Christiansburg. But we never thought that you would approve 18 homes over here that we'd be looking straight down on. That is, I disagree that it is going to increase our property value. I know it's going to be some really nice units. And I thought about it, and I thought about these emails that have been coming to us that have kind of been scare tactics a little bit, if you will, where it's like, "Oh, if we don't build here, if we pull out of this, you're going to get something worse." I trust you guys. I like the planning commission. I haven't talked to you guys yet, but I like them, you know? And I feel like I've been heard. I feel like when we say something, it's definitely being listened to. And it's being repeated, and it's like, I feel like our interest, our rights are being looked out for by the planning commission, the two meetings we've been to there. But I trust it. I trust that if this does not go in, because they say we can't make enough profit if we do two units less, three, four units less, whatever y'all decide, then I don't think it's going to be that bad. I don't think you're going to go back and then approve something more dense. At our last meeting, Ms. Briggs brought up a really good point, I think it was Ashley Briggs, that Mr. Rice was saying, or one of them was saying to developers, that this was already approved, or some subdivision was approved by you guys pretty recently, and that that is more dense than what he's doing, right? But the thing is, what Ms. Briggs brought up is that was approved because there's two dense projects right side by side, and it's in the middle, so it matches. As you can see, this, it does not match this. This is less dense, and it certainly doesn't match Karma Heights. So ask you to reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Just fine. Are you with Tim or are you speaking?
I am, but I would like to say something.
Okay.
My name is Shirley Anderson, and I've lived on Vinnie Avenue for 28 years. And I'm not 70, not that there's anything wrong with that, but I bought the house in my 20s, and I've lived there all my life, pretty much, the whole time I've lived here. And during the time that I've been here, I've seen a lot of change. I've seen, you know, divisions, subdivisions going in, no changes to Stafford. The townhouses in the back and the apartment complexes, even the backside of Karma Heights and the subdivisions in the back, all of that. I've been there long enough to see all of it, and not one time has the town improved Stafford. And the traffic really is an issue. I know progress is important. The density of this is incredible, and I can't even believe that it's even being considered. But before all of this is at least voted on, I would at least ask, please drive Vinnie Avenue on the side that connects to Stafford and just see for yourself because the whole time I've lived in my house, there's not been one improvement to Vinnie nor to Stafford. And I really think that that should be considered before this. Thank you.
Let me clarify, the Stafford Drive?
Yes, sir.
Around 10, 12, 15 years ago?
Yeah.
We begged the residents of Stafford Drive to give us a right-of-way to widen it, and all of them turned us down for one. And now the Stafford Drive people are coming back and say, "Oh, you got to widen the streets. You're going to have this thing done 10 years ago." But we have tried to do something on Stafford Drive, and the residents turned us down. I think we are now going to widen it. I believe that's what I see, so it's in the works now.
Well, I really appreciate that, and I had no idea that you had done that previously, so I appreciate you saying that. But it does come to a point where if the town is going to approve all of the expansion, the town's going to have to do something with the road. We can't just expand all around it.
I'll speak to that. The right-of-way of the townhouse, and there's only about 30 feet along Stafford. And as the mayor said, that's been a priority of ours. And in fact, our opportunity to do that was with this Clifton Town Center. And that was something that we strongly suggested to the developer that they improved that road as part of that development, and that came forth as a proffer. So that road is only about 16 feet wide now. It's very narrow.
It is really.
It's a good path.
And even Vinnie on the northwest side, I'm in, like I said, I'm in- And even Vinnie on the northwest side, I'm in, like I said, I'm in 70 next to Mr. Bashing. And that road is so narrow that when our neighbors have guests and they're parking on either side of the road, you can't drive a car through it, you have to drive up wetaway, out Almeda and down Stafford. Like it is a very narrow road and I really would appreciate someone maybe driving it before you vote on how these trucks are going to be getting back and forth and maybe a solution somehow to fix that road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, is that door clear? Is anybody else waiting in line? Are you speaking?
I'm speaking.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Lisa Dalton. I live at 30 wetaway, so I am beside Mr. White looking down on it. I guess I have a couple of questions and just comments, I've spoken, given comments before, so I guess I'm concerned if this does get approved, the density of this, that you're going to, in a snap, the property right above it do the same thing, so it's just going to be crazy back there. So I just want to point that out, that they do have that, I guess eventually that will come, come to you too. So I feel like if you do this, then you're going to do that too and that is really, really going to change that area a lot. And I have concerns like all the other homeowners have already spoke about, but we've been here a while, so you've heard them. And the other question I have is just if they do construction, when will the hours be for that? So, thank you.
The construction hours?
Yes, for the development.
Thank you. Anyone else to address this? Does anyone want to say something out there? Anybody out waiting to address this? Okay, I have a letter that was sent and asked to be read tonight, it's a town council meeting. It is from Mrs. Joan Esten Hills at 295 Slate Creek Drive, Christiansburg. My husband and I reside on the corner of Vinnie Avenue and Slate Creek Drive. We are getting, connecting the two sections of Vinnie to create a thoroughfare in this neighborhood. Please consider carefully the following. It is stated in descriptive language requesting a zoning variance that it is not decided how construction traffic will access the road building and construction sites. This is a duplicitous statement at best, as Vinnie Northwest is a narrower street and has a blind corner as exit, as exit is made onto Stafford. Vinnie Avenue and Slate Creek is a wider section with easier access to Waters, Pepper's Ferry. Comment, it is better to be honest when dealing with citizens whose tranquil neighborhood it will be disrupted forever. By completion of the thoroughfare that will ultimately connect Ant Hill Developments next to Stafford and also on Dylan's New Van Trail. Number two, when the developer was asked how long the anticipated construction from beginning to completion would be, the answer was he hoped to have it completed in three years. Comment, three years. How many of you on the planning commissioner town council have a burning desire to listen to construction traffic from 7:00 a.m. daily until at least at best 4:00 p.m. every day for three years? Now, Mr. Rice's comment was that, was that after the initial phases of site development, after, I'm sorry, the initial phases of site development, including road construction, there would only be pickup trucks and occasional delivery, really, no deliveries of building materials such as lumber, siding, bricks, et cetera. Point number three, Vinnie Drive, Slate Creek Side has already necessitated corrective work to the road manhole placements and is a large section that is, that was redone and is showing signs of deterioration at this present time. Her comment is a certification should be required for it from a reputable road construction company, that this section of Vinnie is capable of handling multiple heavy construction vehicles such as concrete mixers and flatbed trailers with road graders, et cetera, for the period of three years. Additional comment, the cost of repeated heavy construction traffic will cause vibrations and have been documenting any structural defects that we see in our home with detailed photographs and written descriptions. If structural damage, cracks, soil shifting, vibrations, et cetera, occurs, we will be obligated to hold the developer and all the town responsible. As noted with letters from other occupants, the soil in this neighborhood has many drainage problems and contains certain types of clay that are shrink slash swell and therefore not totally stable. For all the residents on both sides of Vinnie, this has been a very tranquil neighborhood. Families are outside together playing with children, riding skateboards and bicycles. Residents walk pets or walk to the neighborhood themselves. Many residents enjoy quiet mornings and evenings on their porches or visiting with other neighbors as friends. It seems to me that the members of the planning commission and the town council have forgotten that we are citizens and taxpayers too. We have the right to have a safe and peaceful community that will not be turned into another ant hill of development. Why do you need to change the zoning? Why not build a number of houses that are allowed under the current zoning and maintain the natural aspects of this area and the privacy of the sections of Vinnie? It was suggested by someone we, I talked to today, that you knew when you purchased, and Christiansburg was a developing town. Well, excuse me, we purchased 13 years ago and that was not the case at the time. We are not native to this area, but truly brought, thought we had found the ideal retirement home. I will be 77 when this madness is over and my husband will be 80. Not how we plan to spend our waiting retirement years. Town council, I ask you to seriously consider what your responsibilities are to the current residents as well as to those who want to cover every single inch of ground of multiple dwellings and ant hill developments. Make Vinnie thoroughfare, make Vinnie a thoroughfare, will not beneficially serve anyone currently residing on either side of this section, but will overbuild in this beautiful natural, natural area. Thank you. Have two other letters, I'm not going to read them, one is a comment from a Leanne Callhead, Callhead. She's asking, do we both know on the project? She cites extended school bus, school buses are crowded, they had trouble with the developer when they, this is another developer, built the townhouses, they were getting nail holes in our tires every other day. She's speaking for residents of tourist circle who lived here since March 2012. Please don't build any more homes here, not enough for him, thank you for listening. And we have another one from Carolyn Long, who is 190 Slate Creek and she has had issues with drainage around her property and she heard, she is concerned that the runoff from those houses may enter into this man-made tree tree that goes in the back of her house and down around your house. It's already at times a mosquito bed and I think that she's not able physically to clean it out like she used to, so that was her concerns. Okay, that's it. Anyone else to address this matter? There are none. We'll close this portion of the public hearing. We've got a conditional use permit request, but I'm not too sure there's anything that hadn't been said that could be said right now. Is there anyone here that would like to add anything different to the conditional use permit request?
I guess I have a question. What is the current zoning restrictions for the one above, for the piece of land above the one that is coming to town council right now, as far as this piece of land is right now?
Property to the north is owned agricultural.
Agriculture right now?
Is that the hand with the proposed government?
It's the vacant land to the north that they're talking about. Okay. I believe that's the case.
And that was just recently purchased, is that correct?
Actually, bring up the zoning map, maybe.
Steve, did you have that?
No, I agree, Senator.
Did you discuss that in the planning commission?
It's R1A. It's R1 residential.
I know there were.
Yes.
There were comments about that piece of land, but I did not realize what the, what the zoning was and after one of the comments denied, mostly from the person that owns the property right there down, I don't even know. I guess on 50, I just had concerns and then the people that own the house on 30 or whatever is in the white, so I think that's a good comment to put in there because the reality is, that was zone what again?
It's R1A, rural residential.
You supported, you supported rezoning and the CUP already.
Yeah, I know, but not for the land on the top, so that's.
It's not about the land on the top.
I understand, but I was just, I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on now, if you are, if you have commented and you are through with this, I would ask, some of you are not COVID acceptable, so I'll ask that you go into the adjourning area or you are free to leave if you would like. Thank you for your participation.
Mike, can I, can I just add a request to that?
Sure.
I think the last public comment that you read briefly talked about standing water concerns in Slate Creek. I was wondering if you can staff go out there and then report back those.
Sure. I think that would dawn.
There is a creek area through that property, so.
Right, and it's, it's wetlands and we've got very little we can do with that.
Correct. It's kind of natural in Washington.
Don't want to instill people together.
True.
Or I would request that they just.
Under the consent agenda, we have a preamble on the minutes of July 14th, 2020, the monthly BLS rezoning resolution requesting recognizing August 2nd today as National Farmers Market Week, resolution in support of the New River Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization's Department of Transportation's smart scale applications for interchange improvements at I-81 and Exit 114, the parking ride and lot at I-81, Exit 114, the widening operations privilege, the town of Christiansburg in Montgomery County. We have a root appointment of Richard Valens, he is representative, and Steve Hupper is alternate representative to the Board of Directors of New River Valley Agency on Aging with terms October 1, 2020, receptive to 30, 2021. Approval of purchase of four police vehicles from Haley Ford through state contract in the amount of $157,000. Licensing and implementation of a three-year enterprise software contract with Tyler Technologies for $1,406,254. Commitment to accept a fiscal year 21, 22, due to transportation, alternate funds projects, New Franklin, North Franklin Street, Wade's Lane Pedestrian Improvement Project and the South Franklin Street, First Street Pedestrian Improvement Project, which will require a 20% town match of $41,943 and a $40,659 match respectively for the inclusion of the future budget.
I'm going to make a motion that we approved the consent agenda with one edition 2.8 that we had the written submitted citizen comments in minutes. And we should do that from here on out.
I'll second.
Got a motion in the second? Any discussion?
Yes, I have a little comment here on number G. For a number of years, I have been the alternate representative to the agency on aging and I know probably there's a lot of people here on council feel like I'm just hogging this and that they probably, other people probably want to become the alternate and I'd say that I would be glad to relinquish that if there is someone who would like to take over that position.
Motion's on the table? You want to call the vote? I don't know. I don't think anyone.
I don't think there's anyone else willing to make their own.
I think you're doing a great job on that.
So we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Madam clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hupper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Spies?
Aye.
That's it, thank you. We have done introductions and presentations tonight, I believe. Next we'll go to citizens' comments. I think we have two citizens that wanted to call in on the.
That's correct, I just promoted one of them. I don't see the other one logged in right now, so if he joins later, I'll let you know.
So that is, and they're limited to, they're limited to three minutes. Victor?
He's still muted on his end.
Victor, are you out there?
Would you have to click down on the bottom there? He's still muted.
Can you hear me there?
Ah, there he is, unmuted.
Victor, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me now?
We can, you have three minutes, Victor, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I'm here to be with you folks this evening. I'm Victor Drencellis, I live in Blacksburg, I grew up in Christiansburg, my mom lives there, we have real property there and I purchased a property there on Main Street a few years ago. I'm involved in rehabbing and bringing back to life. I've written you folks a couple of times urging you to vote against a school board rezoning request. I feel like that would be a big mistake to move their bus operations there, but that part of the town is a beautiful quiet area and I'm trying to do my part to revitalize the building there and that part of town, bringing quality office space and quality resident harvest to that side of town. I want to remind and reiterate that the planning commission barely voted in favor for this last week. If the one abstaining member would have voted, I feel like this would not have been amended zoning this evening. I don't want to criticize the school board too much, I know this is a tough one, I know that a lot of you are torn between what's right for Christiansburg and what's good for our kids and our students. I know that eventually the school board will need a new bus operations center. I just don't feel like that the old middle school is the right place for that, I think there's a more appropriate place somewhere on the outskirts of town in an industrial zone property. Just imagine the unsightliness, the noise and the pollution that a bus operation is going to bring to that part of town. I couldn't imagine the folks that have just bought that sprawling property there on Sheldon Street that they ever envisioned a bus operation there. So I think we have to be careful that we, I came to the school once a year, that we have to ultimately look at what's best for Christiansburg. I envision that property someday being.
Thank you, Mr. Drencellis, your three minutes is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Next on the list?
He is not logged on right now, so I'll let you know if he joins during public comments, but.
All right. Any other public comments coming from council tonight?
Hello, everybody, I'm Robert Wasser with GFL, formerly Wade Industries, which you all know me. We do your recycling. I just want to talk about Frayland, Mr. Frayland and his group. We had an incident today, I don't like to admit it, but we delivered a dumpster a month ago and I ain't going to go through the long story, but anyway, the driver messed up and didn't, didn't clean out the corrals good enough, so it caused a major issue, but I just wanted you to know, we fixed it within 30 minutes. I've known about it, and if anything ever happens like that, a lot of people here in town knows we're real quick to fix our problems. So I just want to apologize. Frayland's a great company. I've dealt with them for years, so I'm just here to say sorry if you have any problems. I'm the general manager with Waste Industries, and you can call me anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. My name's Alicia Vought at twenty-one ninety-five Denhold Road, Christiansburg, and I came two meetings ago with a concern that I brought before the council and the mayor, and I would just like to know what is being done about that.
Did I not answer your email sufficiently?
Uh, well, you told.
It's a matter of public, you know, freedom of speech.
You told me there were three different people that were being accused of being Jennifer Martin, and there's only been one. Councilwoman Sachs.
I'm sorry, you're off base. I've seen at least three others that have that have said that they've done that. So if you got nothing else?
Well, actually, I've got three minutes, so.
That's fine. Would you?
So I'm starting to feel like you guys are not going to take my concerns seriously, and I'd just like to know why.
Well, first of all, we listen more intently to citizens of the town, honestly.
Right, but if when a private citizen gets harassed by a member of your own council, what's my recourse for that? Because I gave you guys all the evidence, the packets of information, and no one asked, no one reached out to me, and no one asked to get the rest of the evidence, because I have a lot more than that.
Well, as I said, when you sent me the email afterwards, that I, it is a, it is a First Amendment right. It's violated now.
You're correct, Mayor. You said it was a First Amendment, but what I'm saying is your vice mayor here is not, under her own name, having freedom of speech. She's making up an account, and that's the problem, and I don't think the First Amendment would fall under that, would it?
That's to prove it.
Well, it can be proven very easily, and I've got a lot of the evidence to prove that.
Thank you.
But I've also got another problem. We're having another issue with another fake account named Jack Johnson's. And I'm just, this thing's getting bigger, Mayor. It's not getting addressed. It's not getting dealt with, and it's getting bigger, and it's a problem, guys.
Jack Johnson. Is that the complaint?
Sorry?
Jack Johnson, okay.
Jack Johnson's, yes.
This is all, this is all social media.
But, but Mayor, it has to do with a person on your council, and so, and it's a problem for me because they've spied, harassed, bullied, threatened me online, and I've got all the evidence to back that up.
Okay. Thank you. We also have complaints and comments on other, on other, on other council members also, so it's it's a matter of, we will get to it, and I'll get to it in time, and I will make a decision.
Okay, well, I've got all the rest of the evidence, so if you guys would just reach out to me, I'd be more than happy to provide it.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Anyone else?
I think we, I think we have our virtual person. Sorry. I'm going to try promoting them. I have technical issues, but.
Do you have him?
I think so.
He's got three minutes. Are you there?
One second.
This gentleman, anyone close to ready to come on?
He's there. I've asked him to unmute, but he's still muted.
I'm sorry. I don't, I don't know where you want to run this guy. He should have been up and ready to go. Citizen's comment section is closed. Committee reports, Mr. Snipes and Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, we touched on this shortly ago. This will come back, committee report on the suggestion to vacate Scattergood Drive right away will come as a recommendation to council at the next meeting we anticipate. So no other further reports. Mr. Bishop, you have anything to add?
I don't know.
Okay, so we're good, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, we have a discussion in action by Mayor and council. Resoning request reminded now, we appoint LLC Apple for property owned and international. Church of the Four Score Gospel of California Corporation located northeastern intersection, Pepper Street Road Northwest and New Village Drive Northwest, tax map number four thirty-four dash A dash eight A. The request to resound is approximately nine point one four acre property from A Agriculture to R three multifamily residential with property, with property. Property is designated as residential and future use land map, future land use map, two thousand thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Public hearing was held on June twenty-third, twenty twenty at the matter table until July fourteenth. Anyone here to address this matter? It's just us.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve the resoning request about a holy point development as described?
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, have a question. Got a second? Any discussion?
I I have a few words here. I think one of the things, and I hope that Mr. Snipes will bring out some more, one of the things that we have in this is about Walter's Drive and the connection for Walter's Drive. I'm not sure if we need to go over the framework of this, of what it is. They have agreed before half of the apartments are completed that they will have that completed. And I believe that's in writing. Is that right, Mr. Winfield?
This is progress.
Yes. I also believe in writing it has that they're going to have someone there at the apartment complexes every day to supervise them. If there's any problems, something like that, they will take care of that. Is that, that's also in writing?
Try to bring it to progress.
Yes. And the last thing I have to say about this is I think I can speak for Mr. Snipes and Mrs. Sachs that we are looking forward to good work where we don't have any, any problems. And I'm thinking that, I'm speaking for both of them, I'm thinking that if we do have problems, that I don't think the three of us are going to vote for any more other projects. I don't mean to be hateful or anything like that, but I'm just trying to make sure that we, we have some pretty smooth sailing on this, and that that's the way I speak. Why I second it because on these three different things, though, I think that you people are, you contractors are going to agree to. Did I say all right?
Sorry.
Okay, you got a comment?
Yeah, I'll make a short comment. There's a documented need for the product that the applicant is putting, or putting before us. I was not, even though it was unanimous or near unanimous, I think it was unanimous recommendation from the planning commission before, I was not comfortable supporting that app, that recommendation, not because of the development, but because of the long-term objectives to, for traffic interconnectivity of neighborhoods and so forth. So I just want to go on the record with council to say that I was not prepared to support this development before, not because of the development itself, but because I didn't want to see another full access intersection along one fourteen. Since that time, the applicant has shown very good faith effort to, to try to make the connection over to Walter's Drive and has put that in writing to, to, by saying that there's a hundred and forty-six units planned, and he, the applicant has said that they would limit their development of the project to seventy-two, which is just under half, until the connection is made to Walter's, and I know there are concerns from the nearby neighborhoods about the connection, but the interconnectivity of neighborhoods is critical to our community, and the folks that are living in New River Village, Mr. Frayland's previous development and this current one, or especially the last development, there's a commitment made to create that second access, and by making that second access to Walter's Drive, it's far better in the long-term interest of the town and for the goals and objectives of connecting our neighborhoods to do that. So I'm making the motion tonight, even though the last time I would not have supported this, but I think that the developers made a good faith effort to, to do that and put it in writing, that that road will be in place and built before the seventy-third unit is built, and that's it. Thank you.
The approval of that was six, four, none against, and four absent.
Oh, is it? Okay, so I stand corrected, so the vote was?
It was six, zero, and four absent.
Oh, six, it's, so it was.
It was a, it was not unanimous. It was by a majority.
Well, okay, I stand corrected on that. So six, the people that were there voted for it?
Yes.
Okay.
And four people were absent.
But anyway, my point is made. Thank you.
Okay.
And my, and my second stands.
Got a motion to second. Right. Anyone else? Madam Clerk? Oh, I'm sorry, you.
Yeah, somebody else is going to say something, but I won't be supporting this tonight, and it's not because of what I've seen this type of development that Mr. Frayland has done. I actually traveled down the runoff with the G Street we talked about last time, and I thought it was, you know, it was, it was in good shape down there, and I even mentioned that at the last meeting. Aesthetically, it worked. The previous studies we had with density in relation to our brick-and-mortar retail that way, I think that was quite a few years ago. It recommended high density housing like this. We have one coming into the town center, which I approved, but a major issue with this is the ninety percent left turn out of New River Village. That's, and, and I appreciate everything, Robert, that your group has done for the second interest going out, away from the mall, and the connection that you proffered in there on Walter's Drive. I appreciate that. My biggest concern is that ninety percent turn left and have to cross two lanes on Pepper Spray Road, and we've heard about that today off of Stafford. I'm not requiring Mr. Frayland to do anything. I do invite council to really look at the issues that's coming out of Pepper Spray. We had the expansion of Pepper Spray Road. We've heard about earlier development and traffic and pulling out of Stafford. My biggest concern there is just primarily people are going to take a lot, and there's no traffic, and that's just very close. If there was something there, I would probably be more likely to approve it, but my biggest concern is developing that that's.
And I have to agree with that. Who was the number of the properties against? The apartments? It was a hundred?
Hundred forty-six?
Hundred forty-six. So just like I was making the earlier statement before, there will actually be over three hundred people going in and out with cars and stuff out of that way. I was going to abstain just because I'm a, I do businesses with the Frayland company quite often, so. But I do hear your concern, and that's very much my concern as well. You're going into Peckers Ferry Road, and you stay there forever. There should be a traffic light. I know the studies have supported the amount of traffic coming in and out of there, but personally, I don't see it.
Thank you. Bishop? Besides?
No comment.
Mr. Frayland, I don't normally make comments in this thing, but I'm going to just tell you right now, I, I have issues, I have concerns over what you're trying to do. I do not hold you responsible for the yards that everybody complains about that aren't growing and the weeds on the, you know, because I have a copy of the agreement that you have them sign that states when you take over the house, you have to water it, you have to do these certain things to make it, to make the yard go. So we get complaints about them. I worry that off, but we have had issues in the past with some of your projects, you know that as well as I do. So I'm telling you, if this passes, we go to watch closely. Madam Clerk? Would you call a roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks abstained. Councilman Hupper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Nay.
Councilman Shawalter?
No.
Councilman Snipes?
Aye.
Says three, two, and one abstention. Passes. Distribution request contingent on proceeding granted by the Nogaya Point Community LLC applicant. It's the same, but it's probably, it's a conditional use permit to deal with it one day.
I'll make the motion to approve the conditional use permit as modified and presented to council.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks abstained. Councilman Hupper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Nay.
Councilman Shawalter?
No.
Councilman Snipes?
Aye.
Three, two, and one abstention. Thank you. Both passes. Congratulations, Robert. We'll do much.
I hear your word. I would love to talk with you anytime about quality and what we've done over the past four years, and I think you make me interested. I'd always take the time for you.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay.
Resoning request of Montgomery County School Board applicant owner for approximately sixteen point six acre property located at two O A College Street Northwest. The purpose is to resound the property from R two, two-family residential district to B three general business district. Property is designated as town mixed use, the future land use map for two thousand thirteen Comprehensive Plan. Public hearing was held July fourteenth, twenty twenty. That motion was coming from the planning commission. There was five, four, four against and one abstain, so you did have a majority of the. Madam Bishop, that.
And the person that abstained was, it was because she was part of DCI, well, and.
Mr. Frayland, she did abstain. I mean, that's.
I know, but I'm saying that she was, that was possibly not going to pass just because we had that one person that didn't get to take a lot.
It may not pass, but it would come to the council with no decision, so we would have acted.
But that actually just happened with us on, on this one.
That's what just happened. You abstained, and you could have voted no. It is what it is. So they abstained.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request by the county school board.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I have a, a comment here. You know, last, last meeting, I bought out that I think this is not an educational thing. If you vote against this, you're not against education, but I take this as a land, proper use of land more than that. And I have some, some questions here, too, that, I toured Christiansburg Middle School about last week, and I saw that they had two gyms there that could be used for scrimmages and for practices, and I noticed yesterday that the Virginia High School League, it has gone to consolidate sports this coming year, and I'm thinking from January to May, it is going to be extremely crowded all over, and they made the comment they needed, you know, more gym space. I saw what the planning commission made some good comments concerning what, what the restrictions that they were going to have on that. Mr. Winfield, do you have, can you read those out for me?
Conditions.
The restrictions that I, if you read there, I thought.
Did you cut them down in the other room, please, or throw them out?
I'll let me talk while he's working that. There, I think everybody on council has read the restrictions that they have, the fencing and the trees and the things to protect the area, which I thought was very good. But I, on there, I did not see anything concerning how long it was going. But I, on there, I did not see anything concerning how long it was going to take them to do this. Now, whether they're planning on, I think they, the Planning Commission said this had to be done within a year, and they were going to do that. But to me, I know they have 40 days here before school starts. You know, how long are they going to, you know, let this go? The other night, last Saturday night, I was over at Amelia's. And I came out of Amelia's and I looked over at the bus garage there in Cambria. And I saw all those buses. And I think they have something like 130 buses. And if we're going to bring those buses over there, you heard during this meeting so far tonight, how tight land is going to be in the coming years, how tight land is right now. And if we move that bus garage, we move that motor pool over there, we're just saying there's no way to develop that area around Christiansburg Middle School. Now, another thing that I was thinking here, too, the gas situation or the diesel situation. If we bring those buses over there, do they plan to refuel those buses over there at the Christiansburg Middle School? And what kind of safety is that when you have all that going on on the? So I, um, you know, I just have some real conflicts here on what, if we're doing the right thing for the long haul down the road. And if there's somebody else on council that has another opinion on that of where I'm wrong and, and where that if I'm not saying the right thing, you know, I appreciate if you bring it up right now and, and square me away. Now, I will say two, two other things. As I toured Christiansburg Middle School last week, there is right across the street from where the garage is going to be built, there's a white house there. And Ms. Hicks, I believe you talked to those people. And those people said, hey, we know it's coming. We don't care. We've been here for 40 years and we can take it longer. I also saw the work that they have done in the middle school, and they have spent some money. But I think those two things do not overshadow the other drawbacks that we have, you know, for the making, making Christiansburg Middle School area into a bus garage. And last week, I was just sort of kidding when I said it's going to make it sort of like an I-81 truck stop. But I'm not sure if how much I was really kidding. That's why I'm there.
Any other comments?
I got comments. So we, this obviously barely passed with the Planning Commission, but one of those, under those conditions and restrictions, there was a comment made in there that, the last one right there, that we are to review this in one year. And we can revoke any, any of this for non-compliances. I have a problem with that because just like the school system is telling us that, you know, if we don't allow them to do this now, they're going to not give us the money for the school system. It's like giving permission for someone to build a house. And then a year later, if they have not put a fence around their house, you're going to revoke the permits away. So, and then what's it going to happen in another year when we tell them, hey, we want to revoke the permit, but they already spent a million dollars fixing this current property? I, I just, that was a comment that I made, that, that I think, after I was thinking about it this week, that I just don't agree with it. I must as well just say no right now. But I am going to definitely take a vote on this. I know I'm only one vote. But I do want you guys to think about this because this is not about you guys right now. It's about our next generations, just like what we're thinking about school system right now. We want to work with the school system, and I think they are doing a great job with their offices down there. I told you, it's not about the offices. Everybody thinks, I think everybody knows it's not about the offices downtown because they are doing a great job trying to maintain those buildings, to be able to equip them, to take care of the IT departments and everything else. But I do think the majority of the problems are coming out here is just because we, we spend money in a comprehensive plan for the town of Christiansburg. And I know it was done in 2013, but that was, that was the stuff that was done to try to figure out what we want the town to look like in the near future or in the future. And I don't see that in there, anything in there, the comprehensive plan talking about we should have bus depot downtown in the middle of our downtown. I mean, this is literally downtown. Is this what we want? We're wanting to spend money in a farmer's market downtown. Must as well just put it over there and dump money over there at the new Truman Wilson property and just build a farmer's market over there. Why are we building anything downtown if that's the way you think about it? Well, the problem is that we're spending money downtown and we are trying to rehabilitate the downtown. And here we are wanting to have a whole bunch of buses downtown. If this was in Blacksburg, it would never pass. We have, right now, we have the ability to say no to this.
Thank you.
Let me ask one more question. Can somebody tell me about, will they be refueling the buses there at the, at the middle school?
Tom, go ahead.
We do not, we do not refuel buses at Cambria Street. We refuel at fuel stations throughout the state. We do not refuel at any school property.
Where did you hear that, Steve?
What's that?
Where did you hear that?
I, I, I didn't, I just, um?
I think it was the second station in one of the public columns that they were going to do.
So there'll be no refueling at the, at the middle school?
No, sir. The district stopped refueling buses many years ago. And we do not refuel at any of our sites. We refuel at commercial locations that are in that business.
But you will be changing oil changes and stuff like that in the trucks, which I think that's what?
We do that at Cambria Street. We've done that. It doesn't safely. Been there for many, many years. In the 22-plus years, the Director of Transportation is there. We've had no complaints about any of the fuel going in and into what. We've only had one issue about the emissions and the smell. And that was over 20 years ago. And it turned out to be in the middle of the cold weather when we turned the buses on and had them run for an hour or two hours to warm them up. Today, with the emission standards, we can't, we're not able to do that.
Yeah, and I think that's a moot point. You're not going to refuel there. So it's a garage. I would anticipate a garage that services vehicles with change of oil.
I'll make a few, I'll make a few remarks, and usually I like to start with a positive and not the negative. And this time, I do have one negative comment to say is, when we hear these reports, I didn't like, I didn't appreciate the carrot and stick. Well, we need to do this or else we won't have money for a school. We're, we're smart and we know projects need to get built. And I didn't sort of like the tie to the funding for a school because we know we need a school, but I didn't like, well, if you don't do this, then the school might not be so easy. That being said, I've heard more on this particular request than any rezoning application in recent history. I can't, I was trying to think back to the last one. So this thing is pretty sensitive, and I'm going to use sort of a harsh word here, but I don't mean it in a bad way. But this is somewhat of a damned if you do, damned if you don't situation. Adaptive, and, and I'll just say that this is on record. There's definitely pros. I sat down and made pro, list of pros and cons. I visited the site. And I've taken all this into consideration, and I am going to support the request. And I appreciate both of you gentlemen being here, Dr. Meyer, Mr. Krantz. I appreciate that. And I know you all have a tough job to do, the same as we do, trying to decide how you get, you know, 10 pounds of taters in a five-pound sack with funds and so forth. So this is a very difficult decision, and whatever we decide at this table is going to have con, or is going to have backdraft. And I can tell you, it's, it's close to home, and this is what we do. So the reason I'm going to support it is I like, it's a distinct community need that we have. The, the adaptive reuse is great. The fact that the screening, I went out and looked at that on site. I do appreciate the vinyl coated, the black vinyl coated chain link fence with the slats and with the, with the tree planting. So I think ultimately it's going to be far more attractive than it is today. So I appreciate that. I shouldn't have started with a negative, but just to get out there. But I do think it's a good use of adaptive reuse of the property. It's very logical. It's going to be much more attractive than it is today. And we also have some controls. That's been mentioned, too. We'll have some, I mean, now there'll be some controls in place. I don't mean that in a negative way. There'll be a mutual understanding of what, what can go on there. And so it is a very difficult decision. And I do think in this case, the pros outweigh the cons. And it is a distinct community need, and we work together so well on lots of things. So I am going to support it this evening. It's a difficult decision. But I do appreciate both of you showing up tonight and making yourselves available. Ms. Franklin's called me. We've talked. But I do appreciate you making yourselves available and so forth. So it's, it's a, it's a tough thing, but I'm going to support it.
I, I need to ask you about the, the exit and the entrance for the, for the buses. I think one of the comments was that you guys were going to use Shellman Street. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, what about being so narrow and everything? Wouldn't it make more sense to use like College Street or use the older depot street to get?
We would take Shellman to College.
What?
We would take Shellman to College rather than us coming out with Shellman and taking a left and going down to College and then the buses, because the buses that are there. So this 130 buses only occurs during the summer, and that's because of the garage. If you go there from the months of mid-August to mid-June, there's about 65 buses on that site. Of that, 20 to 25 are spared. The remainder are buses that go out and service Christiansburg High, Christiansburg Middle, Falmouth Grant Elementary, Bellevue Elementary, Christiansburg Elementary, and Christiansburg Primary. When those buses come out of Cambria or we come out of the operations center, we go all over. We pick up a wide zone. The Christiansburg Strand is on both sides of 81. It goes all the way up to Bellevue Elementary. So we have to service the needs of those students. So we don't go and just, but, but there's this misconception that coming out of the Christiansburg Strand, and I heard it at the commission meeting, that we come out and we generate hundreds and hundreds of trips. And again, from mid-August to mid-June, there's basically 28 buses that serve the Christiansburg Strand school. That's it. And not all of my Christiansburg Strand buses are there. I have buses at employee houses. Why? Because it's less cost to the school district. It's cheaper for me to have that employee take the bus and begin their route and bring their bus back home than it is for me to have employee drive to the office, pick up the bus, and then take the run. We also have buses that sit at schools. I hear the discussion about Blacksburg, and I'm not from here, as everybody knows. But yet, when we go to Blacksburg, prices fall. I have buses there. Blacksburg Middle, I'm parked in front of their school. From mid-August to mid-June, I have 10 buses that are sitting right smack in front of the building. The point I'm making is, I'm not, we don't have 130 buses other than in the summer when I bring everybody together for servicing purposes. And as we've discussed, I can position those buses and not bring them all in at one time. I could be at CMM. I could be at CHS. But then if I go to CHS, we do things with the town that could have an impact because I'm taking parking spaces. And that's the only time we reach above 30 bus limit.
There was a traffic study, um?
No, because we answered the question. That was on the application of, and we said, the buses. But there's only 28 buses, and those buses service Christiansburg High, Christiansburg Middle. If you go out in the morning, there's 15 buses that sit at CHS, and there's 13 buses that start at CMM. Those buses then flip. Once I make the district, we pick up those students and drop off at those schools. I turn around with those 28 buses and I service all the elementary schools in the strand.
Okay, thank you. We're, we're not, we've already discussed this and debated it several times, so I'm going to call for a vote.
I know you're calling for a vote. I just got a question. Joanna, you mentioned number nine, permit Shelby subject to review by the Planning Commission one year and is subject to revocation for noncompliance with any local, state, federal regulations. What exactly are you saying about that? I didn't understand.
You're not like that?
Are you saying you, you're anticipating that if there are violations to the CUP or, or, or what we require of you?
Well, no, it was about, it was about the maintenance and everything else, like all those items under there. Or that was my understanding, that they had to follow every single one of them, including the maintenance and the, all of the, about the facility. Because even up to today, if you go over there by the property, I mean, I know the buildings, they're using the buildings, which is great, and they are going to rehabilitate in there. They have done a great job in the buildings. But as far as even the grass and the maintenance of outside the property is also not even well taken care of as it is today. Cambria Street is not even a point.
But if this is approved, do you feel like number nine, that regardless of if they don't meet any of the conditions that are on here, that either staff or council or Planning Mission, Commission is not going to be able to enforce or revoke this?
That they won't?
That's what I'm hearing you saying. That your concern is that we, we are not going to enforce in one year if they don't meet all of this.
I just feel like it's going to be very hard for us to. Because right now, it's as easy as to say no or yes. If we say no, it's not going to happen. And then the chances are, maybe we'll give them more time to find, you know, to sell the lane on Cambria and buy another piece of land that is more adequate for what they need or somewhere in the county or somewhere in the industrial side or somewhere where it's not going to be in the town, middle of town.
Right. But you mentioned, and I, I saw your video on Planning Commission, and you, you were concerned about enforcement after one year of, of the MCTS not meeting our requirements. And you even said it again tonight. So I'm asking you, just for clarification, are you concerned that if they don't meet these conditions, that the Christiansburg Town Government, whether it be Planning Commission, the staff, or us, are not going to enforce that?
I am, I pretty much, I think that that's exactly right.
Thank you. Madam Clark, would you call, would you vote, counsel?
Let me ask one more question. You, you've looked over this, these requirements by the Planning Commission, and you think without any problems that you can handle what they have requested?
Absolutely.
And you can do it in a fairly quick manner?
Absolutely. We have had no reason up until this point to make the property look nice. It's been an abandoned school for several years. And I mean, no one's been there since Blacksburg Middle was there for a couple of years. And this has been abandoned. And that's why, you know, I, I, whenever I saw grass run through the cracks, that's going to be taken care of real quick. I mean, we're, we're going to make the property look nice. I mean, you don't have, in fact, you don't have to tell me to do all the things you're telling me. I've done them anyway because I take pride in our property and what we do. And it's going to look as nice as a school does, anywhere in our school division. I, I think our, in the past three, four years, our schools have increased in terms of the current appeal and the appearance. So we're going to, we're going to take care of it. You don't have to tell me to do it. We can get it done.
Be over your shoulder and make sure you do, assuming this passes.
And this, this is silly, but when you do park? We, hold it. We, when you do park the cars up, the buses up there, you're going to do a decent job. It's not going to be here and there and everywhere, right? You're going to have?
And I'll answer this right now. You know, I was there today. It's something we're going to do with all our service vehicles. There are going to be numbered in spots. They're going to, they're going to, they're going to, we're going to have the same vehicles beside each other. It's going to be arranged in a way that looks orderly and, and like professional, correct? And, and that's the way I think it should look. The buses will be assigned to spots, and they will, it will look and appear in an orderly fashion. That's the way, that's the way I like to do things. And, and it will, it will, it will be like that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clark, would you call counsel, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Nay.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Schalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is five one. Motion carries. Conditional use request contingent on proceeding item for commercial garage, lane and shop in contractor storage yard. Property located to a college street. B3 general business district. Property is designated as downtown mixed use. Public hearing was held July 14th.
I make a motion that we will approve the request.
Yes, sir.
Motion of a second. Any comments, questions?
I do want to make a comment. While they're here before they leave, I would really, really like to ask, because I know this is not part of the agenda, but I would really like to talk to you guys about the fact that we do want to work with the school system. There's no question about that all the time. Please don't feel like we don't support you, because we do. But just like you're coming over here to us for rezoning of this and to get permission to have all these buses and everything, I'm also asking for town council to consider thinking about, we have some facilities in the town of Christiansburg, and I know that we haven't talked to you guys and I haven't talked to anybody about this with you guys, but I think we should really consider talking to the school board somewhat and maybe allow them to use the aquatic center and the rain center.
This has absolutely nothing to do with what we're voting on.
I understand, but I just.
It is an item for future discussion. We will. Madam Clark, would you call counsel?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Schalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is five one. Motion carries. Congratulations gentlemen. We will be watching.
Thanks for coming, both of you.
Thank you. Resoning request for Golden Triangle Development LLC for approximately two acre property located north of Blade Drive Southeast and south of Interstate I-81 adjacent to Reagan's Point subdivision tax map 530-2-87C. The request is to reserve the property from an A-8 agriculture district to the R3 multifamily residential district. Property is designated as residential on the future land use map. Public hearing was held July 14th, 2020. There was a nine, oh, and one absent vote to approve. Do I have a motion?
So motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion of a second? Any discussions? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Schalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is six oh. Thank you. Conditional use for requests for nine additional single-family units within development approximately density of 4.4 units per acre and to reconfigure the open space and stormwater management facility. Public hearing was held July 14th, 2020.
I still move to approve F.
I'll second.
Motion of a second? Any discussion? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Schalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is six oh. Thank you very much. Discussion Freedom of Information Act for your policy. Melissa, I believe you have a presentation on this?
Yes, it will be very brief. So yeah, Andrew, will you just move through it for me if you're going to share it? Okay. Good evening, council. We just wanted to come back before you tonight to clarify a few things from our last discussion last week. I have a very short presentation that hopefully just point out some of the questions that were raised and go over the policy a little more clearly. Andrew, you can go to the next slide. Okay, so the purpose, Virginia State Code already allows us to charge for FOIA requests as long as we do not exceed the actual cost in accessing, duplicating, supplying, or searching for the requested records. So the creation of a charging policy is not required. We could continue operating the way we have been and charging at our own discretion. We currently charge and the request will take multiple hours of time. And that standard has changed throughout the years. So the creation of this policy will help eliminate that discretion and be more consistent and fair across the board, especially because we are seeing an increase in the number of consistently larger requests. Next slide. So basically, the main takeaway is that we want a public, we want public documents to be accessible to the public. And we don't want this, the act of charging in any way to deter requesters. However, as I mentioned, the overall number of requests have increased and are often now for larger batches of emails, which require significant staff time. And the reason for that is because we can't just send emails over. It's not an easy search and forward type of thing. When it's for a larger batch, each email has to, well, for any email, it has to be read and reviewed to ensure it doesn't contain a wide variety of information, including personnel information, attorney-client privilege, certain tax information, customer account information. Those are just some common ones we see. And that's a really time-consuming process, depending on the number of emails that must be reviewed. This is just a quick visual. This is for last fiscal year, so July of 2019 through June of 2020. And that's the number of FOIA requests per month. So as you can see, we're seeing a consistent increase. And on the next slide, I have specific numbers as it pertains to this fiscal year. So just starting July 1st of 2020, I've processed 17 requests in 19 working days. And a lot of those requests take more than, you know, just one day. So they can bleed over into multiple days and it's really taking up a significant amount of staff time. So the process for coming up with this policy, we reviewed other localities' public policies that they have posted online and requested policies from a couple of our neighboring localities that didn't publicize their exact charging process. And we drafted a policy that ensures access and fair practices. So the time charged will, for performing the responsive tasks, will be the actual hourly rate of the lowest compensated agency employee qualified to perform the work. And I'll touch on that in another slide in a second. And we will charge for work that takes more than 15 minutes. And that kind of allows for simple requests to continue to be fulfilled at no cost. So if we're just pulling a document, forwarding a few emails, that allows us to recoup the cost of staff time spent searching for those larger requests. A question that came up last time, and I'll touch on it again, but making every reasonable effort to provide documents to professional journalists free of charge as we have done for many years. And I wanted to call out a few things in state code that came up in our last meeting. If the requester owes money to the town from a previous request that has remained unpaid for more than 30 days, we can require and we will require payment of the past due bill before responding to a new request. State code doesn't allow us to charge upfront, but if the amount of producing the requested records will exceed $200, we will require a deposit, which is what state code allows before processing. Copying costs, just to touch on this really quickly. It's noted that we'll follow the fee schedule published online. This fee schedule exists independently of FOIA. It's not something created by my office. It's for the, it's town-wide. And we will be evaluating these costs because, you know, we don't know when these were last looked at to make sure they're still fair. But in a quick search, most localities in the area do charge 10 cents for copies, which is what we charge, which you can see there. So quick, three questions that you brought up last time. Can we set a rate? I think last time $40 an hour was mentioned, but any standard rate? Know if it's more than the actual cost incurred in fulfilling the request. So the purpose is to recoup actual costs, nothing more. It's not a revenue generating process. Why are we charging the costs, and that's per state code? Why are we charging the cost of the lowest paid employee? And why is that what we suggested in the policy? That's extremely common across localities and ensures that members of the public are able to fairly access records and are not charged the highest paid employee's hourly salary when the work could have been completed by an employee at a lower rate. So the goal internally will be to have the lowest paid employee actually do the work. And council members were brought up. What we're suggesting and recommending is that if a council member requests documents as part of their official duties on council, staff recommends that that request be fulfilled free of charge. However, if the request does not directly relate to duties as a council member, they will be charged as a, you know, following this policy as a member of the public would be. So what we're hoping to get from you is direction on whether you would like to, the policy didn't change between last meeting and this meeting. So if you would like to add in the following about council members and journalists, because that wasn't addressed in the policy, we can, you can go ahead and adopt the policy with that amendment and we'll add those in, or if there's other major items we need to review. That is the end of my presentation. So any questions or concerns?
I don't, I think that we charge from the second we start, not 15 minutes free. And I think council should pay regardless.
That was one of my questions. How do you, how do you determine what certain councilmen's responsibility is or are? I would assume each one of us are, even though we may sit on appointed committees, we're still responsible when we make a decision, researching and being responsible for it. So I would stick with what I recommended last meeting, that any request made by a council member, if we're requiring our citizens to pay this fee, then we will pay it as well.
I wasn't at the last meeting, but reading, reading the agenda packet and that's first. I mean, we're citizens first, then we're servants on top of that, but we're citizens first. So I don't, you know, I don't, the fee structure, I don't want it to be prohibitive because our goal is transparency. I understand when things, you know, gets out of control. So I'm open for the majority of council, but I don't want our fees to be onerous. And, but I understand the balance there. And if something, yeah, and things can get out of control, and they are getting out of control, especially since the first of the year has spiked up just tremendously. And if, if I could go get an ice cream cone every time I want one for free, I'm going to go get an ice cream cone a lot. But, but our goal is transparency. My point is the goal is transparency. And we should make that, we should, you know, protect that. But at the same time, there needs to be some reasonable cost.
I'd like to go a little further. I'm glad that was one of my comments is transparency. I've thought about this a lot because we all ran on that. And as citizens, even if we weren't on this court, we want our local government or even national or state to be as transparent as possible. Because that's what FOIA is for, okay? But my concern is, and Brad, you touched on it, is the cost. I don't see why we just can't go with, if we're willing to go with an hourly cost, why can't we just go with the minimum wage cost that way and it's straight across the board? Is there any reason why we can't do that? Because the cheap, the more inexpensive it is, and I do agree that there has been a uptick in requests, but it's all about transparency regardless of the intentions of the person submitting it. But to me, it should be as inexpensive as possible. If we, and the minimum wage, I think that's fair. I mean, if you're going to start charging an hourly cost after 15 minutes, why not, why not do it the lowest possible?
I'm fine with that. That would not be prohibitive. I'm thinking to somebody that's of low income, I agree with that. I think I can, I can support that, lowest, just the minimum wage, some kind of a nominal charge. But I do not want this to keep people from requesting the openness that they expect or are entitled to.
10 bucks is okay?
Of minimum wage instead of 15 an hour?
No, no, so let's make it 10 bucks.
I'd rather give minimum wage.
Give minimum wage.
I guess I have a question too, because you didn't touch on the fact of all these fake accounts. So as far as fake accounts, how are you going to resolve that? Because FOIA is very, very much clear on that, that you can request for their information. And then it should be provided, and not just fake information should be provided. And if you, if we are going to be charging, that's, you know, anybody can make up an account, it's implied.
It has never been my policy to require identification of someone who's requesting public documents because I understand that to be someone, even if, you know, there's disagreement about who it is. It is a person who's requesting a public document. And if we move toward charging anything over 15 minutes, that person will have to, will pay, you know, the cost to access those records, but that's something council can talk about.
From what I heard from calling FOIA, that they can charge. They actually, well, they, they charge, not only they charge, but they do check on the identity of whoever is asking for this request. Another thing is, if people do not live in the town and they're making those requests, they should be able to pay more money than the town Christiansburg citizens. As a matter of fact, if a town in this Christiansburg wants to require this, I don't think there should be a charge. But, but for people that don't live in the town, I just think that there would, there should be two rates for that. Because if you live in the town Christiansburg, it should be either the lowest rate, because obviously their taxes and the real estate and everything is paying for, for them to be able to be, you know, to have the benefits of having you and having Randy and having everybody else work for them. So I just think that there should be two different rates.
I think we're going to, you went from what we charge, which is what we're discussing here, to who should be able to request.
Yeah, I mean, we got.
FOIA covers all citizens of Virginia.
You put an email, you wanted that on the agenda. How about that's what this cost expanded to? But let's deal with the cost first. And then if you want to add that to the next agenda, who, who can request FOIA? I don't have an issue.
I think that anybody anywhere in the state of Virginia can go for your request.
But you're getting ready to say something.
I think Mayor Martin just said it. I mean, I was just pointing out that the reason why sometimes you will have localities that will sometimes require verification of residency is because Virginia's Freedom of Information Act is not extended to non-residents. It would extend the same to any resident of any locality in Virginia. But sometimes there's a legitimate question as to the residency of the individual making the request. And sometimes there's a need to verify that they are in fact a resident of Virginia who has rights under the Freedom of Information. So that may be, you know, what you were thinking of. But that's, that's an instance in which.
Okay.
That is your point.
I thank you for.
I've got a question about the professional journalists. How do you, how do you make that assumption?
That's a great question. The reason the word professional journalist was in there is to indicate someone who that is their profession. They're not, you know, that is someone who is a working journalist for a newspaper, a TV station, a radio station.
They should not be paying for any of that.
I have a few comments that I'd like to throw in there. The last time you spoke to us, you mentioned that there may be another person hired at a lower rate of pay to handle these tasks.
Not hired, not a new employee.
Oh, okay, okay. If that's the case, then what would our true lowest person that could do that task? What range of wage are we looking at?
Good question. It's a, well, it depends on the request. So requests come in typically to my office, however, they're often not things I can do. So I have to ship it out to the planning department to pull, you know, permits. I have to ship it out to finance to pull information. So it's not something I'm necessarily doing all the time. What my office primarily does is review the emails. So if it's something about communications, we have access to the email archiver system, the social media archiver system. So that's typically what we pool, and there are two of us in my office. So, you know, right now, I've been fulfilling requests. I think the internal goal is to have both individuals in the public relations office able to pull documents.
I see, okay.
So it really depends on the request, you know, and that, you know, if there is a desire for it to be consistent, I don't see a reason why it couldn't be just minimum wage because state law just, you know, ensures it, it's not a revenue generator. It has to be the actual cost, but it can be less than the actual, you know, recouping less than the actual cost as well.
It was mentioned last time, which if Randy had to do something, you, you would have to be paying his hourly rate.
I see.
And that's why I mentioned, why don't we just go with the lowest hourly rate? We know that's the minimum wage across the board.
And it's not prohibitive, and that's important too.
Yeah, and this is certainly not intended to be prohibitive. I mean, that is, my goal has always been, and that's why I think we've seen an increase too, is because we are a locality that doesn't consistently charge unless it's going to take several hours of time. And that's, you know.
And even though.
Can we set a standard rate? I thought it was, you know, it's sort of thing of code, it's based on the lowest hourly figure of whoever's qualified to do it.
Well, she's using the correct language from the code, that basically says the actual cost of producing the records. That could be different from locality to locality depending upon what staff are qualified or whose job duties responding to FOIA requests include. Personally, I like the language of using the lowest rate of compensation of a qualified employee, I think that's smart. If you, just to add a few things to the discussion about where transparency and cost intersect, I'm assuming that council's a little concerned that, well, if we make it so expensive to get the records, it may affect the transparency that we want to provide, correct?
Mm-hmm.
If I'm understanding it. Well, just to explain this, a lot of your FOIA requests, and maybe you've done the studies on this, but many of them will be in the less than $200 range, is that your experience?
Oh, yeah, I mean, a lot are just pulling a document that already exists and sending it over.
The vast majority of them, and I think this is important to keep in mind from the standpoint of whether or not an individual making a request, making a FOIA request for records of a less than $200 amount is going to be somehow prevented from being able to get the records due to the cost. See, for those requests under the Freedom of Information Act that are for records that are less than $200, the locality still has to process the request whether they receive a deposit or not, unless the individual requestor requests an estimate in advance, okay? If they request an estimate in advance, let's say it's going to be $50 to respond to the request, all right? And you send them notice that we're going to go ahead and produce the records, but since you asked for an estimate of what the cost will be, well, we'll tell you now it's going to be $50, okay? And then the time period between them receiving the notice of what the estimate's going to be and their response to whether or not they still want you to produce the records, it's not counted within your five working day time period to respond. But, for those requests that are less than $200, okay? If they don't request an estimate, this may sound odd, but if they don't request an estimate, then we still have to respond within the five working days by providing the records to them, even if we later send them a bill for the cost of producing the records. So, the point being is, is that the records are still going to be made available to them because they don't have to pay first. The only time that we have to give them an estimate in advance is when they request it. Now, by contrast, for those requests that are over $200, because they're more expensive for the locality to produce, then we can initiate the cost estimate, the advanced cost estimate, it's going to be, this is such a luminous request, it's going to cost $400 for us to produce these, and we want you to know this in advance, and before actually doing all that work, we're going to require a deposit of $400. You see, for those less than $200 requests, unless they requested, the requestor requested estimate, then we could go ahead and produce the records, so the transparency is still certain. Does that make sense? The only issue with, that I would see with, with using, like, you can certainly use minimum wage if you want to, I understand the logic. The only downside I see to doing that is, is that if you, you would essentially, the town would essentially be subsidizing the FOIA request to a certain, to a certain extent, because likely whoever you have producing the records is getting paid more than minimum wage.
Right, well, we're doing that now.
Yeah, we're doing that in spades now, maybe we're doing it in clubs later.
And that's, and my understanding is that's why you're wanting to, at least apart wanting to adopt a policy like this.
You mentioned if, now, if you, if you provide these requests and it goes unpaid, then you don't issue another request as part of the cost.
That's, that's provided, she's correct, that's provided for in the act. So, so in other words, it's something I agree with. And listen, I think, and I think this is a good point, let's say it's one of those less than $200 requests that you went ahead and had to produce the records, and then you send them a bill for the $50 that it costs to produce the records, and they don't pay it. Well, the next time, you may not have any other way to enforce it, I guess maybe you could, probably would, the next time that they make a FOIA request, you're going to say, "We're not going to respond to this new FOIA request until you pay us the old amount." And yes, that's, and that makes sense, and that is provided for in the act, and yes, that makes sense.
And don't require payment upfront, or, I'm trying to remember, I read that, deposit, we did not, or, only if it's over 200, only if it wasn't, right?
Right, we give them an estimate over, if they request the estimate, or if we provide the estimate over 200, and then they don't give us an indication about whether or not they want to move forward. We're still not requiring funding upfront unless it's the over, unless we've decided to require deposit, if it's over 200, and we've said, before we process this $700, what we estimate to be $700, we require a deposit of X, Y, and Z, but then, as he just mentioned, it would only be the next time they request, if they didn't pay their current bill, then we would say, you know, "We're not going to fulfill this request until you pay your previous invoice."
I still, I still agree with the minimum wage, it's clean, you can't have somebody go, "I submitted this FOIA request, you've charged me $199, now prove to me why it costs $199," and then you have to do further staff research, "Well, you know, our assistant town manager spent this much time on it, and my assistant spent this much, and somebody from public works." It's just, to me, it's clean and it's, it's the lowest, I think, hourly rate allowed by all, so I think it is clean, to me, it's clean, there's no explanation, you don't have to name into details, and to me, I would, I would want to know if it was $10 request, well, who touched this, or 20, or however much it is, I would want to know, I want to know the amount of hours was put in by an individual, how much they got paid, which to me, then creates additional, so why don't we just keep it clean, keep it at minimum wage, and it's the lowest, lowest cost for hourly rate?
Can we, can we do minimum wage for town Christiansburg citizens, and then do a different charge for county citizens or people from other states?
In all candor, I'm uncomfortable with that type of structure from a legal standpoint, and it's because, I can't say that I have seen that issue come up, but, but I'm a little concerned about that the Virginia Freedom of Information Act provides people rights to all citizens of Virginia, to public records, even if they don't live in the same, even if they don't live in the locality that they're requesting the records from.
But if you live in Florida, we can definitely charge them.
You just say that, residents of Florida, or any other state other than Virginia, do not have rights to public documents under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, but if we received a request from a resident of Richmond, Virginia, for our records, they did.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
Unless that, that person from Florida is part of a professional journalist.
Well, okay, and to make, to, to, to further expand upon this, I thought we were talking about individual citizens.
She was, I'm just, I took it into.
Right, but if you, for example, you had, for example, an entity of business that is like a newspaper that has circulation in Virginia, they would also have rights, just like an individual citizen of Virginia. There are other individuals or types of entities that have rights under Virginia's Freedom of Information Act, but if we're talking about a natural person, if they're a resident of Florida, for example, they would not.
Mike, have you been involved, or have you reviewed our policy, or?
I have.
Read it, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, has our, have our attorneys, have our attorneys reviewed our policy?
We reviewed it, obviously, I mean, I thought, I thought it was well-written, and, you know, I thought that, oh, there was one small thing, I would say five working days, or than five days, because I promised you something, right? But no, I thought it was well-written, but I think it's important to keep in mind that in application, if they make a request that's less than $200, we still have to proceed with responding to the request without receiving any money upfront unless the requestor requests an estimate in advance.
And I will clarify this, and I, hopefully it's at the top, but it, it does not supersede anything in state code, so things like that, we would still follow all Virginia state code charging policies and any FOIA policies and state code, so it's not, it doesn't cover every little nuance like that that's already covered, you know, potentially in.
I have two questions. The, the first one is, what if somebody can't afford it? I, I mean, they're surely not denied information they have the right to.
No, and I, and we always work with people to narrow down what they're actually looking for, so a lot of requests are for, really what they're, what they're looking for is for something quick and easy, they just don't know, so they come in really broad, and we come back with, you know, can we help, you know, make this more specific? So, there's a ton of ways to help.
Is there a form that they fill out, or how does one determine if they truly can't afford it? Just like in the courts, you know, you're provided a public attorney, and you have to prove that income, but how is that done here?
If there's anything that.
I'm not aware of anything in the act that, like for example, in the courts, you'll have a determination, indigency, and the state sets, you know, sort of thresholds for what that is, I'm not aware of any similar.
Okay. So really, right now, if it's just under 15 minutes, they could get whatever they wanted, or?
Okay, right, and would definitely work, I mean, that happens a lot, where people have never submitted a FOIA request, and I totally understand, you, you don't, you might not know what language to use to get to what you're actually looking for, so you come in with just a broad, "I would like all of these things that, you know, when, when looked at, that's going to take a really long time," but, you know, our goal is to provide the information, so, you know, whether that's, can we have a conversation for what you're looking for, or is there a way for me to answer this question, instead of maybe hundreds of documents that you'd have to look through to find the answer kind of thing, but, you know, we definitely want to get the documents to the person who's requesting them.
I understand. Okay, the second comment was for council, you know, one of the topics was whether we charge professional journalists or not, and, you know, I feel like a little bit of a devil's advocate here, because we are forced to publicize our notices in the newspaper, which are very expensive, and we don't have a choice, because I've asked, that's a public something, whatever the word is, I'm sorry, I don't remember, so if we're paying the newspaper, then I think they should also pay us. I don't think there should be anybody void of paying a fee. We can't put our notices in the newspaper for free, they're paid. So that's just something to consider, I would say nobody, we don't have any exclusions to.
Well, they're, they're a private industry too.
Profitable.
Profitable, and when we put an ad, not, not to defend any particular newspaper or something, but we're paying for advertisement, the same as you would for an obituary, or, if you want, and I'm not, I, I understand that the media is part of probably the biggest source of transparency, public transparency, so I'm not, I'm not, I understand, I understand, I'm sympathetic to it, but I don't, I don't see standing in the way of press as being in our best interest, as far as that goes, but.
To answer your question about the indigency issue, there's also, it's provided for in the act whereby the requestor can come and inspect the records.
Oh, I see, yeah.
You know, without necessarily, there may be time, and I guess.
Yeah.
Accessing the records for them to inspect, but they can avoid at least some of the calls in the actual copy, for example, or other forms of production. There was a question earlier about, I was looking for this, didn't find it at first, but there was a question about, you know, and I don't doubt that it may not be the practice to always request this in each instance, but under section 2123704, it states that the custodian may require the requestor to provide the name and legal, provide their name and legal address.
Exactly.
So in other words, you do have the authority to require whoever requests records to verify at least their, their legal name and address.
I would really like them to be put in the record, because the reality is, the town has done that in the past, the police officers have done that, or at least in one instance that I heard about, they have asked for a ID identification, and I asked for it, because the reality is, I was tired of the harassment emails, and I think it will cut down a lot of the red tape that goes on, because one thing, I am all for transparency, and it's great that people want to ask for everything, but another thing is using that information to trash somebody else, and that's not fair. To you, to me, or to anybody else?
I don't mind requesting it, but if that's what FOIA is about, putting our information out there, I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with it, I think we've already established that anybody in Virginia can request it, whether it be from Richmond, Montgomery County, or this is Christiansburg, what we're talking about right here is, where do we go from here? Or do you want to bring something back next meeting? Does council agree with the not to exceed minimum wage for the hour, and that council has to pay for it as well, regardless?
Both of those, and I came in, my only concern with this was the cost, and I think, I think that's, I think it's excellent suggestion, you can't, who could take issue with it, it's a reasonable cost, and you won't get any, you know, it'll do what we intended to do, and that is decrease superfluous, you know, burdens on staff time, or not superfluous, but unnecessary demands on staff time without any.
Any motion on that?
I actually love the whole thing, but I would really like to have that section added to, to that, if that was a possibility, and maybe taking even a vote on it, because the reality is, you may not have a problem with fake accounts, but I do, because fake accounts is not something that's not, that's not right. And mostly if we.
The only information they're getting, Joanna, is what you put out there.
I know, but one thing is, one thing is doing that in the right way, but here, the problem is, even with Jennifer Martin, it was a fake account, a fake person, and it sounded like it was the vice mayor of the town.
I don't, I don't want to get into this, because I know there's been accusations here, but there's also accusations on social media, you've had several fake accounts, so I don't want to get in that.
Me? I have never had a fake account, sir.
Do we need to?
Let's move on.
I have never had a fake account.
That's fine, I'm just saying, but there is.
But don't, don't make stipulations, you're putting on the record, it's not true.
There is an accusation out there.
Well, you're saying it, so it's his or saying, and it's not right.
But it's on it.
Well, I want to make sure that gets checked.
We are done! Would you save this?
Please don't talk to me like that, sir.
So what do you need, a motion?
So, yeah, if, if those are the two things, what we can do, we can go two routes, we can just add that in, and you can, tonight, take action with those two amendments, or if you would like another copy emailed out, or at the next council meeting, you can, let me know how you want to proceed, but I think I'm pretty clear on the two items to add in, and.
Do you need a motion?
I think we were hoping.
Can we make a change for the five working days as well?
Right, yes. And clarify that.
Can we please, since there's been a lot of conversation, just review the changes?
Yes, so changing it to minimum wage, the, the charge, and that council pays, follows the policy as any other member of the public.
There's no exceptions.
And five working days.
No exceptions to council numbers.
Five working days and not to, and, and minimum wage being the hourly cost?
And I think Freedom of Information Act is anything that we do, so I don't have a problem with anyone who asks for it, I would not want to require that.
Of what you just said, if you're looking for a motion, I would make that to vote exactly what you did.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, and a discussion?
I would like to have the FOIA law added to the amendment, or to the, the FOIA request about asking.
I think she's wanting added to the policy, is I understand that the FOIA compliance officer, or whoever handles the request, shall verify the name and address.
Exactly, sir.
Of the requestor. That's discretionary, it's already in the act.
It's already in.
This is, this is about cost, so.
Yeah. Well, it's also about enforcement, you want to enforce a policy which is a really You want to enforce a policy which is a really part of the FOIA.
I'm not gonna, the motion's on the table, I'll call it, vote, or I'll make a motion to call it, vote.
Call, would you call the law?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Six, a.
Thank you. We'll provide that amended.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
We need to consider a resolution for acceptance of Virginia Department of Transportation property located between North Franklin Street and Homewood Drive, Northwest Tax Department 436-A, 25C, partial ID is 071280. What is that? Is that it?
Riskly vague.
Weed pads that VDOT wants to give us?
VDOT has offered it to us if we would be willing to take it over, but we would have to specify use for them. I've talked with Brad Appleby, basically that's who they approached about the potential. We fought potentially a community garden if council's interested in the property. If we did specify use for the property and we ceased to use it for those purposes, then we would have to turn it back over to VDOT. But we're basically just taking open space and potentially a community garden space.
Just point there next.
Maybe you should put some garden all up.
Randy, do you have a question on coming on there?
The one thing that I will have a comment on with it, we did look at it as a community garden space because it's level and 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 there's, there's opportunity to be able to divide it into many different tracks. The other aspect of it that that could prove to be beneficial is trail connectivity along that area there. You're so close to where the Huckleberry Trail is, as well as, as you go towards where Sheets is located, that would connect back to the the Huckleberry entrance behind Home Depot's area there. So, that particular area, I think it's approximately two acres, does that sound right?
It is, right.
You know, there could be some use there. At one point, when when Mr. Hounds was the town manager, we had talked about a dog park in that location, but with the high traffic and those types of things, that just really wasn't, you know, the right place for that type of an item. So, the community garden was, was an item that we thought about.
Would that require, though, a lot of fencing and be very expensive because it's close to such a very busy road?
It is, effectively, along the North Franklin.
I'm not sure, I'd have to, I'd have to look, see, I'm not sure on that. Randy, do we need to gain that property right now?
No, we don't, VDOT does.
VDOT does, well, you did a good job of that.
Right, I would agree with that because we talked about the dog grounds, at least going down that way, but.
Can we just have, like, flowers or plants or something in there? And it does not have to be like a community garden?
We could make it a landscaping area, that's possible.
I mean, that's, that would be a really good opportunity to have that done in there because we definitely need some color and something that doesn't look like.
I agree, Joanna, gives us a better chance to use it more so than projecting for a farm, for a garden. And we don't want the dog park, and we don't, I mean, we're not making any more land, and if we can use it for, if it has a value to us as far as connectivity, then I don't see a problem with it. If it has, if it doesn't have that value to us, then we can really use, I don't see it. Because your department's going to maintain it. You understand that, Bryce?
Sure. Randy, just, do you guys recommend we, this would be a benefit for the town to think about?
I think, I think we could have some useful purpose for it.
Additional recommendation?
And worst case scenario, if we ever do cease using it, we can simply turn it back over to VDOT.
I do think a community garden is.
The putting the flowers is a real good idea. It's stuff, that area right there needs a little something, and I don't, it's not going to cost us a fortune, and I think people appreciate when they see stuff like that.
I think the trail connection is, is a, is a great idea and also, you know, we do see quite a few folks that are walking from residences to working areas around, in the uptown area, so as much as, you know, provides for a pedestrian connection, a part of the pedestrian connection into that area to, to, to citizens.
I think we've heard two very, very good ideas for the lane, whether it's community garden or even beautified, I think that's a good idea too. So, and the point is to make is high visibility there, that is very high visibility, so whatever we do, that sends the right message from the town. So, I say, if you're looking, has there already been a motion made?
No.
I'll make a motion, we consider a resolution for accepting VDOT's offer for this two acre gem.
I'll second.
Motion second?
I'll second.
Other comments? I would just like it to.
Two acres, two acres.
Twenty seven, did it go to the recommission for use? And then recommendation?
Oh, yeah, recommendation, that's a good one.
Okay. So, any comments?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Six, a, thank you. Staff reports, town manager?
Just to point out that we set the, the contractor set the bridge today for the trail, the aquatic center, think it looks pretty good, we'll be looking at the abutments, but you can tell what it's going to look like, it looks pretty nice. I know if you'll be stopped by to look at it. And I'll just point out that Chief Hanks and Major Ramsey are here for health test update.
Any other, Mr. Town Attorney, you got anything?
I have no further comment.
Other staff that I would turn that over to the chiefs and so, for their reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I know it's been a long night, so I'll be brief. The Public Health Task Force continues to meet three days a week and work every day of the week and conduct community drive-through testing two days each week. Today, they tested at Christiansburg Middle School, approximately 160 people tested this afternoon. Radford will be done Thursday, and then next week, we're going to Pulaski and, and back to Blacksburg High School. Want to take just a moment again, I know you've heard Chief Sisson say this, but special thanks to Chief Hanks and Curtis Witt for their logistical expertise in setting this up. They've truly created a machine that we can just pick up and set down anywhere we need to go test for, whether it be a different locality, at a business, somewhere that has a problem, if the health department requests it, we can respond to it right away. Over the past, since the beginning of the pandemic, the New River Health District has had 407 confirmed cases of COVID-19. That's resulted from 9,877 lab tests, giving us a percent positive rate of about 4.1%, which is still below the state at which is right now at a rolling average of 7.3. I bring that up because there's an important distinction that I want council to be aware of. Our testing process is done locally through the Frayland Biomedical Institute at Virginia Tech, which gives us much quicker turnaround time where you're hearing that commercial labs have a seven to 10-day turnaround time nowadays. We can still get test results back in one to two days. One thing that has done though, their computer software's not compatible with VDH in Richmond, so we actually have about eight or 9,000 negative test results that are not showing on the state database. That means our actual percent positive is much lower than what it actually shows. So, in our area, we're running a percent positive rate of around 2.3, somewhere in the mid-twos, which is really good. The people in the community are doing what they need to do, staying healthy, looking out for one another. I know it's been questioned in the past of can we tell how many cases we have in Christiansburg? The closest we can do right now is to give you the 24073 zip code. Since the beginning of the pandemic, there've been 94 cases in that zip code. Now, that's not specifically in town because that does cover some area outside the corporate limits as well, but even at that, that's about a 3.2% positive rate. And again, that doesn't count those negatives that are not in there. So, great town in Christiansburg's in the twos as well, we just can't give you an exact number on that. Some of the work aside from testing that's going on, the task force has been working with VDM to create tabletop exercises for the school systems. They've been going around to all the regional school systems in the New River Health District to run tabletop exercises on how they'll respond when school goes back, should they have a staff member or student test positive. So, it gives those administrators an opportunity to walk through exactly what they'll do, how they'll deal with a problem, and hopefully get it in a place where they're comfortable and know they don't have to shut school down, or they don't have to shut down an entire strand or entire system because they have an issue in one place. So, that work continues, they've been doing those tabletop exercises last week, this week, and will continue next week. And the last thing I'll mention is that they're also working through the Public Information Group to bring out an extensive media campaign just to emphasize the commitment to wellness and the regional approach to that as school starts back and we start seeing people come back into the area. So, there's going to be a lot more information coming out, just emphasizing, wear your mask, wash your hands, socially distant, be responsible. There's not really a bad or dangerous place, there's just bad or dangerous behavior, and it's all of our responsibility to take care of that and take care of each other. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you have with the caveat that I'm not a medical expert.
You know, I noticed the paper this morning was probably the biggest jump of Montgomery County during the whole time. Was it something like around 50?
We had, there was a one day, the paper, I'm not sure where the paper got that 59 number, where they said the weekly average is 59 now because we haven't had a week with 59, so it's impossible for the average to be that high. There was one day where 15 positive cases were reported, so it looks like a huge spike on the graph. But it's, sometimes it's just data getting dumped in after the fact, which makes those numbers look high, or there could be, you know, an outbreak at a business or something that's like that, but it's still a pretty small scale, you know, comparatively speaking. We're still far below anywhere in the state or, well, any problem areas in the state with our, both number of cases and our percent positive. The governor's press conference this afternoon, he mentioned concern with some parts of the state, but specifically focused out on Hampton, Hampton Roads area. If you followed that or paid attention to it, he moved them back to a partial Phase Two today, but left Southwest where we are.
Does it scare you about tech students and Radford students coming back?
I think.
Or should we be scared?
I don't think so. I think we need to be realistic. I think we're going to see an uptick in cases as students come back into the area. But as long as we emphasize the messaging and can test rapidly and contact trace rapidly, and tech has a very robust plan in place to do this, as does Radford. They've had athletes coming back into the area for the last, oh, about a month now, and it's really not been causing any big problems or big spikes for us. The things we've seen where our cases have kind of crept up a little bit have really been more associated with two things, moving into Phase Three, which just brought more people out, put more people in restaurants, stores, just moving around, interacting, and with vacations, you know, people are traveling and interacting. And we're seeing this, we're not seeing spikes, so I don't want to use that word, but the increases we're seeing are what what they see across the state is with young people. You know, it's with the 20 to 29-year-old demographic, and there's, there's reasons for that. It's the behavior-driven, they're partying kind of thing. That is a concern with college students, but there is going to be a very intense messaging campaign with the idea that we're going to call on them to adult in a whole new way as they come to college. So, there's going to be a lot of emphasis on that coming from both the task force and the local communities. We have to be realistic and expect we will see cases and we will see them creep up. What we don't want to see is the big spikes, and that doesn't cause me grave concern with the colleges coming back. I think, I think there's more good to be achieved from that as long as we do it right, as long as we get our message right and do things the right way, then there is harm to be achieved.
Thank you.
Very nice report.
Don't you criticize? Thanks, Major.
Good to go.
Good, is that it? Jazz, is that it? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other staff reports? Council reports? Ms. Sacks, we started on that end of the table?
Just really quick, I am going to be bringing a topic to the wastewater sewer. We need an acronym for that one, concerning PFOA testing, and I briefly spoke to Randy about it, but it's an extremely dangerous chemical that came from West Virginia from DuPont, and our area has not been tested yet. And I feel that it is pretty important to our citizens to do those testings. And I would like to bring it to the meeting so we can discuss it and perhaps ask the authority to take that up.
Well, we could do that, now Randy's our representative, the authority would be the one to do the testing. Can't we be able to say right now as a council, we want you to take it to the authority?
I, I mentioned it to Don, who manages our wastewater treatment plant and our water and sewer utilities, he's superintendent of those utilities, and he said he didn't know if the test was available in this area, he's going to do a little research on it. So, we'd like maybe just a little time to research it ourselves before we make it a recommendation. I was hoping to bring it to the Water, Sewer, Solid Waste Committee consideration in the future. But like I say, right now, Don kind of indicated maybe a little bit of difficulty in having the test done. And of course, we don't control the water treatment plant ourselves, it's a member of authority, so I guess we can make a recommendation to the board that they consider it, but if they can't get the test, might be a little bit of an issue.
I wouldn't, I mean, this, we would do a recommendation to council and then to Randy that he would take to the water authority as a, as a board member, or can't we just do that now as a council? We recommend you, I mean, I would agree that you take it to the water authority, recommend that test, and then report back to us if they accept.
Does everyone understand what a PFOA is?
No, I believe that sounds scary.
Yeah, it's scary enough for me to ask Randy to do it, so.
Yeah, it is. I don't know how many people remember this, but in Parkersburg, West Virginia, DuPont Chemical Company got in some serious trouble with EPA, found out that there's 80,000 chemicals that the EPA does not watch that DuPont creates. Well, it's in Teflon, and at that time, it was called C8. Since then, they now have a C9, 10, 11, everything but an 8. So, if 8 is super dangerous, you can imagine all the others are too. Well, that's in many products, it's in baby products, it's in Teflon in your cooking dishes, and people were dying, getting cancer, it was a horrible situation. I'll send a link to council so you can look at it, but if you go onto an interactive map, it'll show what counties have tested for this all over the United States, but it has affected the globe because it got in our water system, and people don't even know that they're drinking these potentially very serious, dangerous chemicals. And so, I clicked on the interactive map to see if our area had tested, and someone south of us did, I don't remember what county, but we hadn't. So, I thought it was very important that we look into this for the safety of all of our citizens.
I think that makes sense, Randy, you don't need to vote for us, right?
I, I could ask Caleb to look into it and maybe just, yeah, get back to us with a little bit more information.
That's good. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Is there any? You have anything else?
You know, the aquatic, you know, the aquatic center is, is open and it's very, very restrictive on who can come and when you can come, but they're getting nice crowds and like Randy brought up a few minutes ago today, they had that big crane that came in that put in the little bridge, it was very, very impressive, and I think that's going to be a real good factor of opening up the aquatic center, going to the skate park and to the depot park, it's just a, just a good addition.
Thank you. Mr. Stipes?
Yes, sir.
Sure. Just in relation to the police water, swimming water, sewer committee, and we do need an acronym for that. Are we still on track for College Street? I mean, it's been two weeks since our last meeting, but we need to be aggressive with that because I do want a meeting in, in August or early September of August. Thank you.
What's that?
For College Street.
College Street.
Water renovations.
Oh, oh, yeah.
The flooding system. Good?
I don't, when you go into other business, I guess I have more there unless you wanted to get it out now.
Well, I would like to get, I have other businesses, starts after the.
Since, all right, I'll just do it now. Since it was mentioned last time that, you know, there were some issues with fencing up there blocking water and the fencing made way, that caused, caused a mass rush of water down College Street. During that conversation, I did mention it's something, you know, who wants no more regulations? But I don't think any, now that we're all together, I do want council to either seriously yes or no, consider assigning a planning commission to look into fencing regulations. That was, that was discovered as one of the major issues that happened on College Street That was, that was discovered as one of the major issues that happened up on College Street for the, that sad, that sad event to happen to, you know, these people's best friend or their dog.
I think what you run into with that is.
I agree with that.
It's fine. We can do it. But it does affect what's out there now.
You're, you're correct, but it could affect future. Like if somebody doesn't have a fence. But again, I'm not a big fan of further regulation with this, but that was a good point. And through the investigation, that was one of the major causes of that mass volume of water. And that fence gateway was blocking it up. And I put it on council. Do we want to, to push this to planning commission to come up with the fencing ordinance or not?
Can I ask you something? Since you mentioned that, I know we asked for the, I think it was Randy that was asked to go and find out if the owners, current owners that are selling the property right now, if there was any way that they could actually fix that problem. Did you get an answer from, from the current owners of the property that we're talking about right now?
Fix the problem.
The one that built the fence and then now backup again.
The fence, the fence that seemed to cause the backup, well, Engineering Director Wayne Nelson has spoken to.
And then had they fixed the problem or they won't fix it?
There is an opening at the bottom of the fence, although there's a lattice fork down at the bottom of it that I think is potentially still an issue.
Well, council, do we, and we can save this for the next meeting, though.
We have 45 minutes.
All right, well, I'll put this on the next agenda then. Council can decide whether to push forward with that planning.
Well, I don't think that that will do anything to the current people right now, right?
Well, I don't think so.
What if they changed the fence?
If, if they.
You gotta rebuild the fence.
Because in reality is, we should be talking to them now because the house is being sold now, I see this, and, and there is.
My thought on it all is, is if they want us to help them, then what are they going to do to help us? Remove their fences, remove buildings out of the middle of the backyard? You know, Howard, you know, we don't mind helping, but it's a two-way street. So that was, that's what we talked to. We had a meeting with College Street folks. I think that's something that I, I think we need to emphasize, hey? We can help, but you gotta help us help you.
Right, but you can always put it in ordinance. And you guys talked about grandfather. That's hard. You want to mention that. But a large majority of that fence was blown out. And you can put it in your ordinance that any repair, you have.
But do you know how hard that is going to be to, to be able to just make sure everybody does that? Does that mean, are we calling for a permit that has to be done every time?
I'm not calling for anything. But that was mentioned. That was the issue. And the only, only way to really kind of evade that issue with water backup into a fence is to have a. Whether or not we can afford it or not, but that's up to council. That's all I'm saying. If you want to afford something up, yes or no?
Because here is my issue that I have with them. The house, the new owners right now that are buying the house, they are buying it with, they understanding that probably the realtor probably hasn't even, even told them, which would be wrong for them not to tell them this. But the reality is, a new person is coming in. The house was under contract already. It probably will close this week or whenever. But the reality is that house is going to, and somebody else is going to have that problem. And this is probably going to recur again if we don't do something now. So I guess my thing is, if you think that the solution.
Yeah, we were going to table this.
All right, I'm going to bring it up.
I think.
Just put it on the agenda.
Let's put it, I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to make a motion that we take Mr. Wingfield's review and push that to two weeks from now. And let's do that. Listen, we've got 45 minutes left and I, and we've got a closed session to deal with. I'll go ahead and be bold and say.
We have to sell.
One second. I'm sorry, Styes, because the reality is, that house is probably going to sell within this week, two weeks or whatever. My request will be, will be, will you guys agree with me to send Randy or Jerry here, like to check into this to make sure that there is, if you don't think that that fix is good enough, I want you to come up with a second idea. So it happens before the new people buy.
But Joanna, we have no ordinance.
But, but I know, but.
We have nothing regarding any type of fencing. We cannot go to them and say, you're going to do this with your property.
But we can, we can.
We have no ordinance or policy to put into place.
But we can mention it.
Well, they have gone to them.
Have you mentioned to them that that's not good enough? Did they reply?
Wayne did mention that he thought that was still an obstruction to the drainage way.
And what was their reply?
They haven't changed the fence since then. I do know the house has been for sale. So, you know, I, I'm assuming they intend on selling it like that situation. You know, buyer, I guess to some degree, buyer beware, just like the previous owners down there. You know, I don't, I don't know who intends to buy it. I can't tell you who the intended buyer is. I don't know if the owner would necessarily tell me who the intended buyer is if I asked.
Here is my advice. As a realtor, there is a realtor's commission. My advice is for you to send an email to the realtors, the commission, and tell them, the NRV Board of Supervisors, and tell them the, for the real estate, and tell them of the problems that occurred over there. So the new buyers know what's going on. I would really like that.
Again, we have nothing to back it up.
Right. But if we, if we get involved with one home, then if someone else buys one in another area, then we're obligated, I mean, it just, I, I think people need to be good neighbors. Real estate agents need to be good real estate agents. And that's not where we need to be.
I just feel like this will be back in our lap again one day because.
Why don't you reach out to them? You're, you're one of, you're a realtor. Why don't you reach out to them and tell them about it?
Yeah.
I think we are the people that are to enforce those things. And so therefore, I would really like for somebody like Randy or whatever to make.
But there's nothing to enforce. There is no ordinance.
I think we need to move on.
My turn.
Just service.
Look, I forgot what I was going to say. Central business.
Central business is something sometime.
Well, I think we met yesterday. Correct. Yeah, well, we tried to, we did. And we talked about what uptown, downtown, and little town.
Cambria, yeah.
We got a fancy name for it.
The placemaking plan for downtown Cambria and downtown.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, y'all would be getting a handout that's pretty thick, about 67 pages. And I guess basically trying to, want to try to get property owners more involved in upkeeping that building as far as used, far as like maybe lay down come for ordinance where downtown be retail, upstairs be rental properties. But the biggest focus, I guess, was mostly on, in the Cambria section. You know, we have talked about Cambria before, but don't seem to get people in Cambria interested to come to any meetings. So we're going to be working on that. But I think you should be getting a handout, I thought today, but.
I will, I'll get back to you. We had to do one correction, man. So I didn't get happy to do that. Okay.
I'll finish.
Mr. Skyes?
And whatever you want.
I want to put this in the record right there. I do not appreciate the way you treated me a little bit ago and hammering the table like that and looking at me. I am a woman, and I feel like that was very disrespectful towards me, and I hope you never do it again because that was it. Like, I did not like that. Now, as far as, I'm not part of any of those committees that you guys got, but I have watched a lot of the committees and come to some of those meetings and stuff. We are going to, there's plans to go into a closed meeting tonight, which I don't agree with it because there is no proprietary information that should not be out there right now. We shouldn't be doing this as a secret thing for the people of the Christiansburg. I just don't want to tell people that we need to get loans later on if you build that park in the middle of a pandemic. There's probably tax and all the increases that are going to be taking place, probably the usage of general funds and most likely even money set aside for the stormwater issues. So I just wanted to put that in the record since I was part of the PPE meeting the other day. I came in to watch and stuff like that.
Thank you. Mr. Skyes, do you have a motion before we go into this?
Well, I apologize for cutting this discussion off to Mr. Shaw and Mr. Skyes. But in the interest of time, our meetings by, our bylaws are to end by 11:00. So I'm going to recommend that we, I'm going to make a motion, if we need to, to move the Mr. Wingfield's review to the next meeting, which would be August 11th.
My second, though.
Motion second. Discussions. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is six oh. Now, we have a request for closed meeting?
Oh, yes. My apologies.
So we got a lot?
We have a lot. Okay, Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A29. For discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. The purpose of the meeting is discussion of the guaranteed maximum price for development of a park on the former Truman Wilson property on Pepper's Ferry Road Northwest.
Second.
Your motion in the second?
There's not going to be a discussion body. I don't think we should have a closed meeting for this. There's nothing new about it.
You just add a discussion.
Madam Clerk? Just call the council.
Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is five one. We are in closed session. I will ask all employees who are not involved in this, please leave.
I move to certify that the town council of the town of Christiansburg, meeting in closed meeting, in the best of each member's knowledge, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into the closed meeting. Need a second?
Second.
Your motion in the second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is six oh. Thank you very much. I am going to email to each of council tomorrow. Since we have postponed the review of the town manager, I'm sending you a review form that I would like to have each of you complete. In return, you can return it directly to me. You don't have to sign it. I don't care whether you sign it or not. It is very, it's, it's, it's a, there's, there's part objective and there's, there's some narrative evaluations as to what you'd like to, to discuss with the town manager. And I think probably what we'll do, if there's that much of a need, we'll set up meetings individually between council member and town manager.
Sounds good.
Sounds good?
Sounds good.
Is there any, any other business coming for the town?